All right, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the North Smithfield Town Council. Madam Clerk, can you start us off with a prayer and a pledge?
Thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Roll call.
Mr. Bureau God.
Here.
Ms. Hamilton.
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Here.
Mr. Ogier.
Here.
Ms. Alves.
Next up is executive session, closed session, discussion by council vote or other action pursuant to RIGL 4246-5A2, sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or potential litigation. One, Dudley Development Court versus Jennifer St. George in her capacity as tax assessor, town of North Smithfield, C A N O P C 2022-5064. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to...
Five zero? Five zero? Oh, sorry, five zero. What did I say? Oh, okay, five zero six four.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Mr. Bureau God.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Ogier.
Yes.
All righty, I'll make a motion that we reconvene back into open session. Let the record reflect that one vote was taken and to seal the minutes.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call.
Mr. Biergad.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara.
Yes.
Up next is open forum, non-agenda items only pursuant to 4246-6D. Maximum of three minutes per person. First up is...
Pharoah McMillan.
Pharoah McMillan.
Thank you. As I said, my name's Pharoah McMillan. I live over Hollywell Boulevard in Sladeville. And I usually have a coffee section with my ninety-year-old neighbor every morning. And sometimes a couple other neighbors come over and we discuss whatever during this coffee. So the last time we got together, we discussed a new trash recycling program. And what we were concerned about is what do we do with our old trash cans? I have like a large trash can for trash and a smaller one if I go over. And same thing with recycle. I have one trash can for recycling and an extra one if I go over. And my neighbors have similar, so that's like four trash cans. So if we're getting two new trash cans, what do we do with the old ones?
I don't know if Ray wants to answer that or want to come later.
Yeah, I mean, just call the office and then we'll tell you exactly what else happened.
Okay, Ray. All right, thank you. And on a side note, I just want to put a plug in for the VFW Memorial Day Parade coming up this coming Monday. And I hope all of you will attend. Audience also participate in it. This is a very significant Memorial Day Parade because if you know, this is the eightieth anniversary of D-Day, June 6. And since we honor deceased veterans that did not make it back home from the war, during the first day of D-Day, we lost over twenty-five-hundred soldiers and sailors on that day, and five-thousand others were wounded. So it's very significant that we honor the ones that did not make it back. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is Marcel Saint Germain.
I just simply have a concern. In a recent meeting here, there was a comment printed in the Valley Breeze. And Public Works made a comment, he would expect Army to get a subcontract to design the Sallyport as is often done in these situations. Well, in regard to subcontractor, well, I met my wife here looking to get prevailing wage in Providence along with a nonprofit called Dear and the union I was in. It would ensure that no taxpayer money should be used on a city job unless they are prevailing wage jobs, as in a worker can afford to live, as in a worker can afford to live in Providence, like the efforts with the police, fire department, and school department to get their workers to live in the city. Unfortunately, I've seen the opposite. There's an immigration policy called the H1B, immigrant status. I've gotten this one dealing with my wife's status. It mentions that as a foreign national's intended employment. And it speaks about basically giving a job to an immigrant that has a skill possibly. So it was the opposite as far as bringing people in and tying them to that job. And basically, they get sent back to their country if they lose the job, if they get fired or whatever. My worst job was at the Fairmont Foundry here in One Socket where the owner, Mr. DeWitt, would go to the prison to hire workers for a job even a starving family man would not take. A starving family man would not take. It would allow the prisoner to be released only if he stayed employed. While there was there, an unsafe machine almost cut off a man's foot.
Marcel, is there a three-minute limit?
Yeah. So I just wanted to, what motivated this was a Catholic teaching on labor. I imagine some of you are Catholics, but it's a moral issue. When Merrimount School of New York partnered with Triniton Construction for their new school, they chose an exploitative exploitation over opportunity. It contradicts the Catholic commitment to human dignity. On April 11th, Laborers Union Seventy-Nine raised an alarm about Triniton Construction subcontracting construction for services. Construction for services is a body shop. A body shop, a subcontract is employed to supply labor for general contractors. These businesses make money renting labor to their workers and general contractors that use markup. The body shops hire and pay often former prisoners to work third-party companies while taking a cut in the workers. Laborers are typically paid wage, minimum wage or less with no benefits. Body shops do not ensure safety of their employees on the site and often lack the necessary safety equipment. Some employers are former prisoners whose condition on release depending on maintaining employment.
What's your concern? I don't, what's your concern?
Worried about subcontracting.
Excuse me?
No, I'm not worried, I'm just asking, what's your concern?
My concern is that this, that my tax dollars shouldn't be used to build anything in North Smithfield that's made by subcontractors that have sub wages and sub quality of safety. And it might even reflect in the building itself being, whatever, being produced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Mike Clifford.
Mike Clifford, 489 Block Plain Road. I just want to encourage you people to take a leadership role in having the police enforce the no parking on Providence Pike outside of the football field in that area. There were videos on mass media this week that showed lines on both sides, all illegally parked, nobody getting tickets, nothing happening to anybody, there's no consequences. But everybody screams that there's going to be a major accident. Yeah, there probably will be one of these days because we don't enforce that ordinance. So why don't we start enforcing it? You know, and I don't want to hear, I've heard in the past before, we don't have the manpower for that. Well, they had the manpower to sit someone over on Green Street and watch the people go through the double stop signs a couple of years ago, so I'm sure you still got the manpower. But it's a priority and it should be a priority. When I went by there one time last fall and Express Football was having a game, the place was packed. All parking lots were packed, but not one car was on Providence Pike. They had their own signs about this big and tall, and they had them like sandwich signs going up and down the side of the street. Nobody pulled off onto the grass, nobody illegally parked on the highway. It works. Somebody needs to enforce it. And maybe if we started enforcing it, people would stop parking there. So, and by the way, I did call the chief a couple, I think a couple of months ago at least, or maybe even last year, and asked how many parking tickets had been issued on that site, and there were none. So could we please start issuing some tickets and take some, maybe communicate with the school department and get them to do, put some protocol in? You know, maybe with the visiting team should be notified, you're going to be ticketed. And then, or maybe we should pay an attendant to just monitor the parking and walk up and down, so you're going to get a ticket if you don't get out of here. So, I mean, it's not that hard. I think everybody does it when they want to do it. So please, let's do it.
Up next is Joey Savigny.
Joey Savigny, 1790 Pound Hill Road. A few weeks ago, myself and several other residents were here in front of the planning board to discuss the Pines Apartments. It was brought up at that meeting that the council had been in negotiations with the developer, and we were asked where that stood. And for the... The planning board advised us to come speak to the council. After the meeting, myself and another resident from Taylor Drive spoke with the developer outside in the parking lot along with him and his lawyer, and asked them if that was even a viable option. Could the town possibly purchase that property? And he was more than considerate about flipping that property. Asked what he's looking to get for it, all they would tell us is a reasonable rate. His lawyer wouldn't let him give us a number. So I'm coming before you on behalf of all the citizens that were here that night in front of the planning board in opposition of this development, asking you guys to reach out to that developer. I don't know if you guys have, where that stands, but if we can purchase that for a reasonable rate, I think it might be a cost savings to the town in the long run, especially with 62 units with no infrastructure. I do know the developer, I think, was a little bit more open-minded after hearing everybody's opposition that night. Thank you.
And finally is Jeff Porter.
Jeff Porter, Sixth Country Way. Speaking tonight on behalf of the planning board. At our March 14th meeting, we made a couple of recommendations to the capital improvement budget, and it doesn't seem like that, those recommendations made it to either the Asset Management Commission or the Budget Committee itself. I do want to bring attention to the fact that we made a couple additional recommendations. We recommended that there be $25,000 be put aside for the DPW to update the road assessment. My understanding that that was done over 10 years ago. So if we're going to be paving roads with $1 million plus, we should at least be able to identify which roads would be appropriate at this time, not the roads that are from a report that was done over 10 years ago. We also made the recommendation that we have a building assessment done of all of the town buildings. We found that paying a little bit for an assessment upfront would really save the town in the long run. And we recommended that we put in $100,000 for that building assessment. There are over 100 town-owned properties, 20 of which have some sort of structure or building on them. So to be able to have an architect and engineer to be able to go through, assess those buildings, where they are in their lifecycle, whether it be mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems, building envelope, roofs, you know, and the like, I think that would certainly save us in the long run to identify which ones are coming at the end of their lifecycle and which ones are good for the next 20, 25 years. We also made a recommendation to upgrade some of the IT stuff in this, in these council chambers. The planning board has a number of applicants come before us, and they're not able to plug in their laptop and project. We have to rely on CJ to get an email, to open up a PDF, to open the PDF in a web browser, which is terrible, if you guys work with drawings and PDFs, is absolutely terrible to be opening and presenting towards the town folk and the planning board as well. So if there's an applicant that comes and can plug their laptop into the projector, that would be a very welcome savings. So it would save on time, it would be, take some of the load off of CJ a little bit here because I know we have had problems in the past with that issue before. So we had put together about $5,000 for that line item. And I just want to speak to the fact that, you know, it seems like we have a bit of a broken process because the planning board, capital improvements, we're the first stop. If we have an asset management commission that is not fully staffed and is able to have a quorum, where do our recommendations go? It seems like they got lost amongst the mix. So I just want to make sure that we're following the appropriate process, but you guys also hear the recommendations, not only from the department heads because we see that presentation right off the bat and have discussions about them, but also that our notes and our recommendations are also recognized as well. That's all I got.
Thank you. Alrighty. I'm just going to move up the Board of Licenses and then we'll get into the grants. So North Smithfield Town Council sitting as the Board of License Commissioners. First is Discussion Vote or Other Action on Pedla Hocker License, ICE RI LLC, DBA Dell's Lemonade. Owner Cory Sucazas? Not here? Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Madam Clerk, so this is just to go around from place to place within the town is what they're looking for, a license?
Yes, they're going to be at the parade over here in the back whenever we have any get-togethers or functions and whatever else comes up in town.
Okay. Everything's in order?
pending no other questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the Dell's Lemonade business license. And wait, I just want to make sure. Hours of operation are 12 to 6:00. And they will begin this, so 4:01 to 10:31 is their operational license with the state. Do we know when they'll be in our town?
It'll be during the summer for the parade in, yeah.
Just summertime?
Summertime.
Okay.
They can't renew it with us or extend it unless we get the approval from the state.
Okay, again, I'll just approve the Dell's Lemonade application for summertime fund.
Okay, is there a second? All right, roll call.
Mr. Bureau Guard?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes. All right, next up, Discussion Vote or Other Action on Victualling License, DBA Little Creek Farm LLC, farm stand cottage food manufacturer of sourdough bread. Owner Kristen McNamara. Location 1575 Victory Highway. You can, you all come up and speak? You can?
Do you want to come up and say hello? She said no at the beginning, but we're making her anyway. Is there a name and address?
Kristen McNamara, 1575 Victory Highway.
Okay. Want to tell us a little bit about Little Creek Farm?
Yes, so it started last year when my son adopted some chicks from school. So we have 12 chickens. And we have too many eggs to eat at home, so I created a little farm stand, and I want to add sourdough breads to it as well.
Everything in order, Madam Clerk?
No other questions, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve Little Creek Farm LLC. Owner Kristen McNamara, 1575 Victory Highway.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bureau Guard?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hope to see you soon.
All right, moving back up to old business. Discussion by Council Vote or Other Action on Status Progress Report of Specific Items, Grants, Zoom Update from GNG Municipal Consulting and Grant Writing, Possible Grant to Hire Additional Police Officer, Town Administrator Zawinski. I believe that Jay Grasso is on Zoom. He's going to address this. Jay, you up there?
I'm just waiting for him to let us in.
I'm sorry.
Just wait for him to let us in. It's in.
Yeah. I'll see if I can reach him by phone.
I think it's coming now.
Is it coming? Okay.
Okay, Jay, can you hear us?
I sure can.
Good. All right, I don't know who wants to start. Paul, if you want to start?
Counsel, this is a council's initiative file. We do have updates in the back that I believe, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Yes, I spoke with Jay this afternoon. He's ready to address if he has questions. Maybe I can fill in some questions also, some answers.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if anybody has any questions for Jay. We'll open it up. If not, I'm sure Jay can give an update. Jay, do you mind just providing any updates?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. No problem. And then if there's any questions, I'll answer them when I'm done. So you're aware, and I think most of you are aware, we managed to get in the grant requests to your U.S. Senators and also to your Congressman. I'd like to let you know the Congressman, they're all fantastic, all the offices, but the Congressman's office was, there were some technical issues. They literally opened the site on a Thursday and closed it on a Monday. And they were having some technical issues, and Tara worked with them in their office, and they were just fantastic to us. I just thought you all should, should know that. It's really nice when you get the cooperation. I mean, they're very busy and they were, they wanted to help the town in any way they could. And so they worked with Tara, and we managed to get that in. So those applications are in. We'll just have to wait and see, you know, where they're going. They don't really ever say when they'll, when they'll start making announcements, but you know, we'll just, you know, be aware and ready for that. We're in the process of working with the police department on the COPS grant, and I know there had been some question as to the match. And I wanted to, that's, and that grant is to add a position. And in the last meeting, we had talked about moving forward with it. And my suggestion is to still move forward, and I would make a determination, say we're awarded, and then if the match is agreeable to the board, then you would move ahead with the grant. If we're awarded and the match is not agreeable to the board, then we just decline the acceptance. We don't sign a contract, there's no harm, no foul. You know, so we have plenty of time. My guess would be those announcements would probably be summertime, late, maybe late August typically. If they're, if they're done like this, I believe the application's due in June. So I'm thinking August, maybe September. And I would suggest that we still continue to proceed with that application. We've done a lot of work. The chief has been fantastic in assisting Tara with that grant. And so we are moving forward with that at this point. Any questions with that? Well, we can wait till the F. If you want. We've started looking at, your state will be opening up several grants soon, and we've been looking at several different opportunities. Most of them are related to parks. Tara's putting those together. We will provide those to you. They will include the match and the potential benefits. And we'll then move forward, you know, depending if you want us to or not. What else were we looking at? I apologize again, I'm yet again in the hospital with my dad. I'm doing this from a, this particular Zoom from a hospital family-type room. I apologize, that's why I didn't turn the video on. He's doing okay. I know we're still waiting for, and I know Tara had asked for it, there's some, there's a particular grant we would like to administer for you. It's a grant that you guys have already received. And we're still waiting, as of Friday, I don't think Tara had it because I asked her, we're still waiting for, the state does not, the state won't give us authorization. They don't want us having our own username and password. They would like us to use the town's username and password. Initially, the town was, it was a little leery to give us the username and password. We're not going to be able to move forward with that unless we have it. And I, I don't, you know, everything's confidential, of course, and we'll protect that, and we have, you know, firewall and protected server. You know, we'll be obviously very cautious, but we'd like to administer that grant for you, but we need the username and password to do so. If we could get that and move forward, that would be fantastic. And, you know, obviously, we applied for the FEMA AFG grant for you. We're waiting to see what the status of that grant is. I'm guessing, eh, maybe as early as late June, we'll know something, more likely beginning of July. Questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I have something to add, Counselor.
Okay.
On Friday, I received correspondence from Congressman Amo's office saying that the Congressman supports it and has recommended it to the $500,000 grant we're looking for for the police station for communications. So Congressman Amo is supporting it, and he's moved the application to the House Appropriations Committee.
Oh, that's fantastic. Can you forward that email to Tara myself?
Yeah, I will.
That is an excellent sign. Excellent sign. And my feeling is that, you know, it still has to go through committee and has to be voted on by the entire Congress, but if that's, you know, moved that far, that is fantastic news. And we'll, of course, provide them any data or information that they need. When that, I think, as you're all aware, when that grant, if, when we're awarded, essentially we have to reapply, but it is a closed application. It's a non-competitive application, and it's just a formality. So keep your eyes open for anything that might come through, and of course, we'll write all that for you and administer all that for you. That is very exciting.
Awesome. Thank you so much. If there's no other questions, I think we're good. Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
That's made my night.
Good luck with your dad. Thank you.
Are we good then?
We are good.
Yes, sir.
You're all set.
Good night, Jay.
Good night, Jay.
Thanks.
We'll talk to you soon.
Administrator, you didn't have anything else to add on the grant for the additional officer?
No, hang on. I think I mentioned this last meeting we had in place of Mr. Grasso.
Yep.
That's about it. You know, I think everybody's aware that we had the $29,000 allotment for energy efficiency, and then the town planner applied for another $100,000. So there's $129,000 for energy efficiency, like HVAC, lighting, water heaters. Eh, what am I missing? There's another one. So that's, that's a lot of money we can use at the police station.
Thank you. All right, up next is the Facilities Manager. I'll have something for the council next meeting. And then Municipal Building Review Task Force. I know Ms. Alves isn't here, so I don't know, Counselor Hamilton, if you have something.
Yeah, the only thing I want to let folks know is we're having our next meeting on 5:30. It's a Thursday at 7 o'clock here. And I know Mr. Pendigast, there were a couple of things that we had talked about, sort of a punch list of trying to get some of the outside, and I know Ms. Alves was going to mention that. So do you, so the, I guess it was the painting of the ramp, right? Was that one thing? And some of the, just so that folks were still moving along.
Ray Pendigast, Public Works Director. The handicap ramp, we have a work order for that, so as soon as I can free somebody up, they're going to scrape and paint that. The chief has spoken to Mr. Dubon. So with the chief and myself, we're working on the looming and the seeding. The irrigation is, wasn't broken, so that's, that's a good thing. And our spring irrigation company will be turning on the water there, so we're going to just try to put that all together. Chief, I think Dubon's going to do a foundation for the Freitas Memorial?
Yes.
So, so once they do the foundation for that Freitas, then we'll bring that back and set that for the, for the family. So, so the outside part is all coming together.
Great, yeah.
And then between the chief and myself, we'll come up with some plan to make the front look appropriate.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it looks a whole lot better. Looks great. Thank you.
Anything else? Are you all set?
That's it. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, so up next, Discussion by Council Vote or Other Action on Public Hearing on Fiscal Year 2425 Budget. So...
President, would you like to hear Scott Rock?
Sure. And then after the chairman speaks, we can open the public hearing. Yeah, you can do it. Yeah, this is a podcast. What's the question? No, the school committee has now presented the budget to the town, just to the Budget Committee, I believe. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Who's that? So I have Madam President, but Mr. President, I give you a letter, like I do every year. We've gone through the numbers on the budget, and we appreciate the town administrator and the Budget Committee with their recommendations of a half a percent increase, and the Budget Committee added $106,000. I just want to stress that unlike, you know, the SFR funds have lapsed, and unlike other districts, we're not in trouble with the SFR funds. And I can tell you that from my private business, I'm involved in advising other school districts and different things, and there's a lot of problems out there. It's not something that we have. We were transparent. We used the money for the right purposes, and we don't have a problem, at least with the SFR funds lapsing. The other thing is that we have come to you and asked for additional money every year for the last nine years, and we haven't run a shortfall on the budget in over nine years. And I think that's important, that we're responsible with our budget. And when we have a surplus, we use that for capital items. We don't cause a hole to be put in the budget. And as you can see, all of our schools are in great shape. We're very proud of them. And let me move on to the pandemic. So I don't think that anybody knows the damage that the pandemic has done to our children. I think that we need to continue, even though the SFR funds have lapsed, social, emotional issues from the damages. And I'm telling you, they're there. I promise you, they're there. And they're extensive. What we're looking for is a 2.3% increase, or approximately $498,000. This is, just alone with the salary increases for teachers, it's $629,000. So this is something that we're going to bring to you soon, and it's a contractual obligation that we have. And the contract was approved by the teachers. Tomorrow night, I expect it to be approved by the council, and we'll send it over to you, I mean, I'm sorry, the school committee, and then we'll send it to the council. And, you know, I'll always say, if you're going to support the contract, you have to fund it. And it's a big number. It's $500,000. But it's something that we need to run the school department. And what happens if we don't, if we get what we're, you know, the half a percent? We're going to have to lay off six teachers, and unfortunately, notices are going to have to go out tomorrow because by law, we have to notify them. So we've got to lay off six teachers, or at least we have to notify them. But 11 notices are going out, and that's the worst thing as the school committee that we do, is send out notices of termination or layoffs. And then hopefully, we bring them back as soon as possible, but not always. Looking, we're only asking for 1.3% of the town budget, and again, that's a half a million dollars. You know, I know it's a lot of money, but again, it's something that was consistent with our five-year plan, and it's something that we need funding for. And, you know, now, again, is not the time to cut. I'll continue to emphasize the additional needs of the pandemic, of psychologists, more individualized attention, and interventionists. We are on the right path, but we need to continue. One of the biggest problems with the pandemic is that attendance. We had very, very low attendance, and if you can't get kids into school, you can't teach them. On April, I posted this on my Facebook page, on April 22, 2024, we were ranked, and we focused on this. We were ranked number one in the state for our middle and high school. And this is something that we really focused on and we thought was important. I want to talk about the progress in the schools. We, as I mentioned, we're responsible with our budget. Unlike many districts, again, with the SFR funds, they got jammed up, to be blunt. The other thing I want to point out is that in the revolving fund, you know, we set up a revolving fund, and this is all with the help of the council. We didn't do this alone. We asked you for a $200,000 a year revolving fund. And what did that revolving fund do? We put it in, we got a 35% reimbursement. We then get the money back out from the state, and then we get another reimbursement. It compounds. It's been tremendous. We were able to do the high school windows with those funds. And again, we kept on going out there, getting the money back, and moving on. So I think we've been responsible. One of the things that I came to you and talked to you about was with the turf field, that we were going to put money aside so that in the future, a future school committee wouldn't, or in a future council, wouldn't be stuck with a field that was dangerous and no funds put aside. So last year, from rentals of facilities, we put aside, we made $57,000, and we put it aside. And we have $300,000 in a fund for a new turf field in the future. That number should grow by at least $50,000 a year. And it's not all about money. I don't want to say it's all about money, but it's very, very helpful to put aside this money. Like, for example, one of the things we do is Special Olympics. We don't charge the Special Olympics to use the field. And we could, but we don't. And this is, so it's not all about money. It's about having a beautiful facility. As you read, I think recently, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges reaccredited North Smithfield. And then what else have we done? We revamped the baseball field, the softball field. We have revitalized the high school with new paint, windows, locker rooms, lighting, new gym floor, bleachers, and a science lab. At the middle school, we brightened up the facility, sanded the gym floor, changed the lighting, and upgraded cameras and security. At the elementary school, we brightened it up, upgraded the HVAC, previously expanded the facility, upgraded lighting, and we are upgrading the parking lot. All of our, just for the record, all of our projects come in at or below budget. We don't come back to you and say, oh, well, we're going to do the parking lot, but we need another $50,000 because we didn't budget properly, or we didn't do something. We don't go forward unless we have the bid and have the money to do it, or come to you and let you know what we need. We've learned in the past that cutting math interventionists and reading specialists have a direct correlation to increasing special ed costs, and that's at a substantially higher cost. If we cut now, I guarantee you, we'll be paying later. You know, I also listed on the next few pages all of the extracurricular placements in clubs, choir, band, and sports. It's completely amazing. And I just hope that, I'm going to ask for, I know it's a lot of money, for you to support us on the additional funds so that we can continue to have an excellent school system. And I'm here if you have any questions, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody have?
I'd like to say something. I hope people are listening to this, people are from home. This has been such a tough year since the virus. I've seen my own grandchildren change tremendously. Mother called out in the middle of the night because of her job. Grandmother, all times in my life, never been as sick. So it's been very difficult. We must continue giving them help. I know our family, the bills are there, to try to get them back on the track. And you need the extra help. And some, you may not see it now. They stop talking. They don't mingle. They drop out of sports. And this is bad. I'm not saying this because I was a teacher. I'm saying this because I'm a grandmother. I was a mother. And I've seen it happen in our street and other streets. It's not, it's not, it's a necessity. And we cannot stop working with the kids. And I can tell you, the principals have been cooperative, and it means a lot to parents and families. And as far as the schools are concerned, I've been around a long time. I can remember, and maybe some of you here, they weren't maintaining. The teachers were painting their rooms, having parents come in to fix windows, putting up and getting pedigree whiteboards at our own expense because we wanted a classroom that would be comfortable and something they could be proud of. At the end, my kids even wanted to help who's to their next is wash windows. They took pride themselves. But in the high school especially, these young men and women are going through a time in their lives where puberty is a tough challenge for many kids. And the other thing on top of it, let me tell you. I'm surprised we didn't lose more. And we've never seen that facility in such, both, I'm proud to walk into it. And I can remember years back, you'd all, what's going on? But now? I think most of you know, if I thought something was off edge, I'd let you know. I'd walk right into it, say, what's going on? But the high school, the two women, the dynamic duo, were going to have to get insurance. And like, in the middle school, you know what some of the kids said? They get in trouble. And they leave, they said, I know we weren't right, but I know they still love us. So I don't want to pay anymore. No one wants to pay anymore. But North Smithfield can't be like it was years ago. We let this town run down. The school, well, most of you haven't seen where the police department was before. When I tell people that's where it was, they can't believe it. Our fire stations are going to have to grow more because the town's getting bigger. And they're at least, what, 70 years old, 50 years old?
54.
Okay, I was close. But we've got to do it now, and we're paying now because we didn't maintain in the past. And people in this town, if they're truthful, they'll tell you the same thing. Roads, fill up the pothole. That was about it. Our town, what they're doing to the roads and their plans, if it was done continually, you wouldn't be trying to stretch that tower as much as you are. You're doing the best you can for what you have at this time. But you're making up for many, many years. And if you've lived here, you know it. So I say, and when you're talking, some have long faces. We have to maintain this town. And so much has been done. And I think there's some things that have to be done morally. I'll go even to that extent when it pertains to the children. They're in a time of their life. Never mind the flu. Everything else that's going on in this country, it doesn't give them security. They hear what's being said, and they're intelligent. Thank you.
Thanks, Claire. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yes. You know, following up on Claire, what she was saying, excuse me. So I was the one that videotaped the cars being all over the road the other day.
Yes.
Because I was going 7 miles an hour anyway. There was a lot of traffic. But the silver lining there, forget the cars and the road and everything, the silver lining there is a testament to what a great job you did and the staff did, the administration, at upgrading those, our athletic fields. I mean, we had a Class A championship. We had a baseball game and a tennis match going on at the same time. And we have a beautiful facility where now we can host all those home events, and that's what caused all the traffic. But like I said, the silver lining is the fact that you have created a beautiful facility where we can finally have home games, and parents can drive a short distance to go watch your children play instead of traveling all over the state. So well done in that field, anyway.
Thank you.
But that's all I wanted to say, as far as that goes. Great job over there. The place is beautiful.
And as you just mentioned, we did have our first home track meet in the history of North Smithfield. I actually, it was, there was a council meeting or a negotiation meeting, and I walked up, and I saw them doing it because it was something that I'd been trying to get done for five years, to get a throwing field in. Then the pandemic hit, and everything kind of fell apart, but we had it put up. And I'll tell you, our kids were throwing. They throw very well. It was our home meet, first time ever. And I'll tell you, I got a little teary-eyed, to be honest with you. I know it's the little things, but it makes a big difference. We have a home track team now.
Well, I have a friend that qualified for the Olympic trials. I mean, he knows what he's talking about. And he said that track is about just as nice a track as he's ever run on in his life. So, great job. Thank you.
Any other questions before we open it up?
No, I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So you're looking for the total amount to be close to $498, right?
Yes.
And that's including the reduction to date, anyway, for state aid?
Yes.
Correct? Okay, all right.
We can make it work, and we can make it work without laying off or, you know, doing, unfortunately, we're going to have to send out the notices.
Right.
But ultimately, if we're funded, we can bring everybody back.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
May I? So just to elaborate a little on the $106,000 that was withdrawn by the state. I'm sure you're aware that the administrator's budget was submitted before that information came out, so.
Yes.
So I definitely would have supported increasing that.
Thank you.
But I want to talk about something I think is very positive. Chairman Lombardi, you just handed out this North Smithfield Public Schools awards recognition, try it again, Paul, recognition and projects. This is absolutely amazing. When we look at the athletic program, we look at first place, undefeateds, winter sports, spring sports, and it's, you know, we talk about the holistic student, and sports keep kids engaged. They keep them studying because they don't want to flunk and be off the team. That's their passion, some kids. Academic and arts recognition, state champions. Remember, what I thought, I just got this tonight, so I didn't have much chance to review it. North Smithfield Middle School, number six on the U.S. News and World Report Best Middle School Rank, number six in the entire country. Where is it? Huh?
Rhode Island.
Oh, is it Rhode Island?
I don't like your interpretation.
Oh. I prefaced it by saying I just got this now. I prefaced it by saying I just got this now. But yeah, thank you for that. You know, the Distributed Education Clubs of America, I remember when that started. My son was in the first group, and they took state champs. And I look at all these first-place finishes for people that are going, young students that are gonna go into business, and guess what? There are, not guess what, you know this, there's scholarships for these kids waiting out there to go into the college DECA programs. So I, music program, it's amazing when you go there at the wintertime. I go to the winter, the holidays one, it's absolutely amazing. Facilities improvements completed. I just want to echo what Councilor O'Hara was saying. This is amazing to see these things being accomplished. And I want to commend the staff, the school committee. And I would also, most importantly, the students and their parents for their passion about making North Smithfield one of this. Thank you very, very much. Thanks.
Thanks, Administrator. So pending no other questions, I will just ask that we open up for public comment. And then before we close it, I'm gonna ask that we don't close it tonight, that we just continue the public hearing, maybe advertise it a little bit more. It's not many people here tonight, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for the budget of 2025.
Okay, is there a second? All right, roll call.
Mr. Birigad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes. All right, so we'll open it up for public comment. If, you know, if we could keep it, you know, relatively, anybody that's willing to speak, if they could keep it relatively short, if there's people that want to speak, and then we'll go from there. I was thinking five minutes to start. If nobody else wants to speak, we can do another round, et cetera. And we'll keep it open for future comment as well. So whoever wants to speak, podiums are yours.
The budget was on the screen up here, and you'd start off with revenue, and you'd say, any questions on the revenue? And then if we didn't have any questions, it's not...
Or maybe we're doing it the...
No, I think this is, this is the path that the finance director has set.
Well, then I'm gonna be bouncing all over the place. And we never limited speech or questions at a...
I understand, Mr. Clifford. I'm just following the directive that President Alves and the council agreed to.
Okay, oh, did they?
Well, the last couple meetings, they spent three minutes during public hearings.
But not for, not for a public hearing on the budget. Not for the public hearing on the budget, never happened.
It's the direction of the council.
And I object to the fact that you scheduled this for a regular meeting, town meeting, because that just puts the rush trap on, and that's why we're not getting the slideshow. Okay, I'll start with some questions. I'd like to ask Mr., I'd like to point out and ask Mr. Lombardi, who just came forward with another request. If you recall last year, at one of the budget meetings, you had a request to increase the amount of the budget, and I asked one of the school committee people, representatives, how much was allocated for turnover? I think it was either last year or the year before. And they said none. And I said, you are supposed to be allocating money for turnover of staff because you always have surpluses. So I don't know what is allocated this year for the turnover, if anything. But I'm getting, really, it's really irritating to see year after year, and I don't mean this to sound like it's not appreciated. But last year, they ran a surplus of, hold on, I got it on here. I think it was $570,000-some thousand dollars, is that right? $574,000 into your fund balance at the end of the year? Well, I got the audit in front of me. You can check it and verify it for me if you'd like. But that was all due to, most of it, a big chunk of it was due to overbudgeting the line items that had to do with personnel. Employee benefits was overbudgeted by 260, I think it's, I can't see this, $284,000. The next item was overbudgeted by 336. And that category was purchase services, which is tuitions and that type of thing as well. So, you know, it's admirable that you get everything done and you're in budget when you do your capital projects, but it's not really, the goal is to kind of come in and tax us for what you really need. And you're not, it's not really a wonderful sign. It doesn't mean you scrutinize things and stayed within your budget. It means you had more revenue or lesser expenses than you budgeted for. One of the things on that budget from last year was a, they budgeted $87,000 for other revenue. They had $263,000 for other revenue. And I haven't heard anybody say, gee, what was that other revenue fund? Where was that coming from? That's not something that sounds like, that's a big number. So either it was a one-time shot or whatever. And lastly, last year, how many administrative, we talk about no teacher layoffs, and we're gonna cut sports, we always like to threaten that. But how many teach, how many, how many administrative, how many administrative, oh, you're gonna lay off all the teachers and everything. How many, how many administrative positions did you add into that budget last year?
I have one to address the council, please.
No, I want to add, this is, Paul, you don't get to...
Is this a question and answer, it's a poll of the area?
Oh, we can't ask a question of the...
Mr. Clifford, we will, if there's a question to the committee in the school department, we can direct the question to the committee in the school department.
Okay, I'm asking. How many, how many administrative positions did they add to the budget last year?
I don't know if they have that answer. We can, we can respond, it may be easier to respond at the end. Does that work? We can treat it like the planning board? What do you want, the back and forth?
Yeah.
All right, that's, that's fine. I was just thinking if they had the research answers, they could give them time instead of rushing, but that's fine.
And again, we'll give you the answer to the best of our knowledge.
I believe the question was, is how many positions did you guys add last year?
Administrative positions.
Administrative positions were added last year.
New positions.
New positions.
Thank you, CJ.
Thanks, CJ. Good talk.
We actually reduced a team at the middle school.
No, I said, excuse me.
Excuse me.
I'm getting there.
I would just let them speak.
We reduced a team at the middle school, math, English, science, social studies teacher. We reduced a central office position within special ed, somebody who was specializing in teams and early, IEP team meetings and early childhood. And we also reduced a district-wide technology coordinator. Now, with those positions reduced, we hired three teacher positions, deans of students. They are, they are technically teachers. They get paid a bit more, have a bit more responsibility. And, and it was also broadcasted that these folks are the ones who are specializing in our social support services, our student attendance, our health and well-being, behavior and discipline, and also our CTE. So it's a multifunctional, functioning position which has had a tremendous impact on our ability to meet the student needs at the school. So yes, we did, due to enrollment and shifts, reduce six or seven positions to fund these three targeted to student well-being.
So my point is, their administrative budget has gone up because those positions are listed in the administrative budget, not under teacher. And it is an administrative position, so why not call it what it is? So we can compare apples to apples in oranges and oranges in other school systems. I really would love to see the data that they had to show that, you know, you need a dean of students, a vice principal, and a principal at a middle school with 500 students in it. Because I was in a middle school with a lot more students than that at the time, or 800. I think we started with 800. And we had a principal and a vice principal. And we didn't have the special ed position that you're talking about that I've never even seen in another position. So, you know, that role was filled by the, by the building administrators in each building. But, you know, I'm just, I'm, we're getting a little top-heavy here on administrative staff in the school department, I think. And it seems like there's no consequence to, oh, we're gonna add these positions, and then how are we gonna pay for it? Well, we're gonna raise the, you know, raise the budget because we have more administrators. So I question, I'd like to see the study that you might have done, or they might have done, to show, you know, what other schools with the similar composition of students and demographics of the community, what, how many administrative positions they have in their schools versus ours, before they add anything new like that? So, you know, it's like, you're here, oh, we're gonna send out the layoff notice to teachers, but you've created a position for other administrators to assist the administrators. And it's just, I think it's a vicious cycle of just expanding turf and not making actual reductions when you can because your enrollment has declined. So...
Do you want me to address these?
Well, you can...
I can address them.
Go for it.
Yeah, if you, if you want to address it, you can. If not, you can wait till the end and address them all. I'll leave it up, I'll leave it up to what the council prefers.
Well, I mean, the administrators were put in, these, I'm gonna say deans, to, as you know, we have CTE program in the high school. There was a lot of physical issues at the high school. If you recall, about a year ago or a year and a half ago, there were a lot of fights going on. That is, and so whatever data that's out there, I can tell you that it's much better at that high school. It's much better at the middle school. And at the elementary school, they're working on, these deans, they're working with the kids on social and emotional things that are out there. I think it would be a tremendous mistake to cut those people. We've had a lot of progress, and, you know, I'm not the expert in the area. I'm just telling you that it's been reported to me that it's going better, or I know it's going better. And I can tell you that in other schools, it's not going better. So that's, that's...
By philosophy, if you want, Clay, I will address it, Superintendent, they can address it. That's the data. They've been invaluable bringing in resources and higher degree of...
So my next question would be, where did the $263,000 in other revenue come from last year that they didn't anticipate but was not budgeted as revenue? Because if they had budgeted that $263,000, if it was known, then we wouldn't have had to give them $263,000 from the town. So I'm just curious, where did that come from?
We had an increase in CTE enrollments. Worked into the...
CTE.
Yes. We also had, if you remember correctly, Harvard Event came up with a library renovation grant. And if you've been into the MSES library, that was through that grant. Plus, there was also a technology grant that they came up with very quickly. And we utilized some of the technology grant to update the sound system at the high school auditorium, which was pretty dated. So it was modernized for our concerts. Plus, we also set it up for any kind of community events so that people could come in. They can plug their laptop, they can stream to a big screen. So those things came. We did not anticipate those.
Thank you.
But we also didn't want, we also were going to turn away $100,000 for, you know, these projects that are, which are in the...
First, I didn't think grants showed up in the unrestricted budget. I thought they were part of the restricted budget. But this was in the unrestricted budget that that came in. So I heard, you know, I did hear what you said about grants, but I thought that was accounted for in a different part of the budget. So secondly, okay, in addition to that, I'd like to know, what was the question? Property and equipment last year was overspent by $300,000, $299,000, property and equipment. So, you know, they budgeted, what did they budget here? Let's see, $217,000, I think? And they spent $514,000, which would have added another couple of hundred thousand dollars to the surplus if they had lived within their budget for capital. So, you know, it's wonderful that they're doing all these great things. I'm not denying it's not good that they're doing those things. But it's also, I'm questioning the budgeting, okay? And I'm questioning also, I haven't heard, what was, is, how much is in that budget this year in the salary account for budget, for teacher turnover, staff turnover? There was a recommendation of an auditor from several years ago who said we have to start budgeting for turnover. And he recommended $300,000-some thousand dollars. And that was about seven years ago, eight years ago.
So if you want me to be upfront, that was the money that we, so we did not, you're correct, right? We didn't budget for it because we knew we had a teacher union contract coming in. We have to pay for it. So is your answer?
So how much was that? You had, you had, how much was it? The extra expense for the teacher contract that you had budgeted as, because you didn't allow for the turnover?
So it was $225,000, $250,000, and then we put a line on in there for $100,000.
Okay, so you had 220, how much did you have in turnover?
$225,000, $250,000, and then we had a line of $100,000 in there for teaching.
In this year's budget?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. I'll leave with the school department and go on to the other stuff. I'm not understanding correctly, well, I didn't really go over the school department budget, so maybe if you continue the hearing, I'll address it later. I want to bring something up here. The format for the legal advertisement for the town changed, and I gave you a copy of that last year, last week, the last meeting, and showed you the difference. And just to explain why that's so important, I had sent an email to the town administrator well over a week ago, and it took well over a week to get a reply back. And I asked, who made the decision to change the format and why was it made? And the reply that I finally got last Friday, I think it was, was, as you know, these are sent to the municipal, state municipal finance office, and they review them. That wasn't my question. My question was, why are we changing it? The municipal finance office just reviews the ad and makes sure that at least the minimum requirements are met of what you have to have in your legal advertisement. They don't prohibit you from putting more information, okay? And the information that we used to put, but we don't anymore, was the breakdown of the local tax revenue. And why I think that's important is, I'll lead up to the, you didn't break it down into tangibles and commercial, you just put a dollar amount in that budget for, you know, tax, total taxes, property taxes. But if you, so I did file an AP request and asked for some documents from the tax assessor. And it shows me, when I got the breakdown and was able to calculate it, that the net tax levy revenue was, for tangibles last year, This year, it's down to $5,734,951. That's $825,000 drop in the tangible revenue, okay? I've been telling you the tangible revenue was gonna drop. Now, I know part of that, $429,39,000, half of that, was because the government, the state is now reimbursing it, so you're putting $439 in another section. But it still shows about $400,000 less in tangible revenue. So what happened to the statement that tangible revenues remain steady? $400,000 in a town this size is phenomenal, big, big variance. So, you know, if that had been presented, we'd be able to track it, and you should be tracking it. Because this means that if we lost $400,000 in tangible revenue this year, you know, aside from the offset that we get from the state, if we lost $400,000 in tangible revenue, then you're going to have to raise the taxes on the other people to make up for that loss before you add a penny to it. So you're just, you're increasing our budget without even increasing the budget because you lost your revenue. So I caution you again to keep track of the tangible revenue because, as I said then, it's going to depreciate for at least the next five years. And this is gonna continue to happen. I don't care what anybody says. It happened, and it's here. So if you want to dispute the numbers, just look at the two tax levy forms and the information that I was provided for. I'll be happy to share with you. information that I was provided for. I'll be happy to share with all of you. You can see it for yourself. So, that's the first thing. The, I had questions on the budget. What is the stabilization exemption tax review? Tax revenue? What is stabilization exemption tax revenue? I'm not familiar with that, how that was accounted for in the past. What does that mean? Because you're showing $5,000 was budgeted in the last three years, and you've gotten over $10,000 every year, and we're going back to budgeting it to five. What does that mean? What is that?
Where is that on the?
Right on the first page of the budget for, under the revenues.
Oh, revenue.
Stabilization exemption tax revenue. And why would it decrease? You've always been budgeting 5,000. When, first, in '22, you budgeted 5,000. It came in at 23,000. In '23, you budgeted 5,000. It came in at 11,300. In '24, you budgeted at 7,000. And as of January, February, March 31st, you had already collected 13,000. Now, we're budgeting 5,000 for next year as anticipated revenue. If that number were higher, it's less money you have to taxes for. So, I want to know why that number is low and why we expect it not to generate more than $5,000. And what is it?
It's tax stabilizations for businesses around North Smithfield.
Meaning what? If it's an exemption, that would, to me, that would sounds like it's they're not paying the tax. So, why would that be listed here as a revenue?
I can go back and review this at another time and get back to you on that.
Well, can we put that as a list for the next public hearing?
It might be good to keep a list, and then we can go through. That way, we don't lose track, in case we have questions, too.
Yeah, we'll make sure that this is something I revisit.
Okay. And I take objection to the fact that the budget is only have numbers on it as of March 31st. And I've made pleas several times at council meetings during this year, as we approach the budget cycle, asking that you insist that they update the numbers as of, at close of the last month. It's not that big of a deal to do it. They always did it in the past. And how can you, how can you make a decision on some of these items only based on nine months of expenditures? Like, let's look at probate court fees. You budgeted 15,000 this year. You've only collected 7,405, and we're still budgeting 16,000 for next year. If we only collected 7,400 in the first nine months, what makes you think you're going to collect another $8,000 in the last, last three months? Or is everybody going to die in the next three months? Is that where that comes? So, you know, I don't get it. I don't get the, a lot of these numbers. The more significant numbers that I'll challenge is the recording fees, is, for this year, it was $100,000 was budgeted as anticipated revenue for recording, recording fees. The actual amount you've collected so far is only $54,000 as of March 31st. So, in the first nine months, you collected 54,000 in recording fees. And I guess in the last three months, we're going to collect another 50,000, because next year, you raise the anticipated revenue to 110,000. So, we're not even, either, either the bookkeeping is really screwed up and we're behind in posting revenues received, or your revenues are coming down. And I suspect it's a combination of both. But, you know, I'd like to see, at least before you people set the budget, an updated sheet with actual numbers as of May 31st, if you're going to do this in June. It's what every council has already, always done. And that's why they've done it, because they can see where it's over budgeted short. Next one, real estate tax stamps. We budgeted, we anticipated getting 190,000 this year. First nine months, we've only collected 96,000. Do we really think there's going to be that many real estate transactions in the next three months to generate that extra 100,000? But yet, we keep the revenue for next year at 190,000. So, it looks to me like between those two line items, you're going to be short 100 and some odd thousand dollars if you don't ask for updated numbers. And those numbers, and if you need to increase those numbers, you have, need to decrease those estimated revenues for next year if you haven't come close to this year's target. Not increase them, decrease them. I don't know what the rationale was for that. Maybe Joey can tell us on the budget committee. Oh, good, good, good practice. So, I mean, if you go through this budget, you'll see a lot of these line items are all out of whack and don't make too much sense. The next big one would be, semi-deep, detail administration fee under, under the police revenue. You budgeted $6,000 this year. You've already collected 27,260, okay? That was in the first nine months. I think it's safe to assume you're going to probably collect more than 15,000, which is what you're budgeting for as revenue for next year. Look at those numbers going across. And the detail revenue fee, the administrative fee, comes from the detail assignments. And you're getting an awful lot of detail assignments with 146 reconstruction. So, I don't think it's going to go down. I think it's going to go up. You know, if you keep going through this, I wish it was a table. I also didn't understand use of the fund balance. Where is that on here? Now, let me see. See, that's why if it went by, if you did it the way it normally did.
It's on the second page.
Okay, so use of fund balance.
I had a question on that, too.
You budgeted $520,000 this year in the use of fund balance, and it's showing no expenditures. Why? I mean, it's showing no revenue. It's showing no transfer. No actual amount. On page two.
Yeah.
Of the revenue sheet. You budgeted for this adopted year that we're currently in, 520,910 in use of fund balance. But there's been no transfers, and showing that any of that has been used. Actual amount, it's zero. No, no money came in. So, I don't, I don't get that. And I also don't get the proposed one, where you're proposing a budget of 75,000 in anticipated use of fund balance, which is a drop in the use of fund balance to 445. But I don't know what that's all about. I don't know what that 510 is. I'd like an explanation of that.
Would you like me to respond? So, I could look into why the actual amount isn't showing up any value there. But as far as the 2025 is concerned, it's been expressed by the council. And I impart an agreement with that, that we should start using our fund balance. We have a healthy fund balance. So, you know, for contingency things that we don't, you know, in the middle of the year, when I get posed, you know, find some money, you know, there's something that we can lean on. So, we pull from our front, which isn't ideal. The state doesn't like it. But we can pull from the fund balance there to be able to pay for things throughout the year that we don't expect. That's the purpose of it.
It doesn't explain the 520,000.
That's why I, and I, so.
Okay. But, and I'll address the 75,000. You're not supposed to be withdrawing from a fund balance for operating expenses, okay?
That's not an operating expense.
Well, what is it, the 75,000?
It's an unexpected expense.
Well, then, why isn't this a called, well, I don't know how you can forecast that you're going to take out 75,000 from your fund balance. You did that to balance the budget, to make enough revenue? I don't know why you do that.
I'm not, I'm hoping the fact that we don't use it at all. If we don't use it at all, perfect.
But Tony, I think the prudent method would be, don't budget it. Because it could be, it could be interpreted that we are anticipating using it. But I know we used the fund balance the last year, and it's, it was explained to us that we could just do a budget transfer in and out. It's as simple as a council meeting, or two council meetings, so.
Yeah, it's a, we have to amend the budget.
Which is, it doesn't matter, because it washes.
Well, you've got to say what the use of the money is.
Yeah, I get, I get that. I'm just, the council expressed some concern. I tried to put in a line item for it.
Like, I wouldn't support a 75,000, just blank check. But if you said to me, it's for Halliwell, and we anticipate an expense of 75,000, or it's for scouters, or it's for roads, or it's something that's tied to a capital project, or some type of project, that's a little different. But just to not have backup, that is, that's a contingency fund. That shouldn't be counted as revenue, because there's an expense to offset it. So, do we see the expense somewhere for the use of the fund balance?
In, there is an expense on, on the expense side in general government, 75,000.
There just wasn't a lot of backup, which is something I struggled with in reviewing it.
Which is, what's something I was going to bring up during, you know, like the adoption meeting. I'm sure it was, I expected some type of questioning about it, and I was going to bring it up. So.
Well, I think we need to have this information before we get to that day, because it's going to be, if we have to make revisions in any way.
Well, the revisions don't get made to this until, until the adoption date.
But.
Right back.
I can provide more information, just saying there's no revisions on the town council's version until the adoption.
I won't vote on a budget if I get the information that night.
No, that's, that's what I'm saying, too.
Yeah, that's what part of, one of the memos in the agenda tonight is for.
And I need it more than a week's in advance.
Yeah, which is why you guys have a memo tonight about it, as to any questions. And that's why we have the public hearing tonight, which is, previously, you only have it usually like a week or two.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with having the timeline.
So, that's, which is perfect. So, I'll get the information and then send it over to you guys ahead of time.
Can you show us where the expenses?
General government, it's the left, page 17 of 17.
Page 17? Thank you.
The expenses on page 17? There is no page 17.
Page.
I don't have page 17.
I don't have 17.
I have nine pages.
Oh, wait.
Keep going.
Keep going?
Well, I don't know.
Uh.
I think it starts over.
17 of 17, expenditure details, appendix C. Is that what we're looking at? Oh, no.
See.
Oh, so.
It's a fund balance, Tony, are you talking about the fund balance?
What's, wait, what page is that?
Excuse me.
Financial, are you talking about the fund balance restoration contingency general government of 75,000? And yet, we only had 100.
I wanted originally.
100,000, but we have a 500.
Yeah, originally, the department request was for 100,000. I wanted 100. The TA and the budget committee said, let's drop it to 75,000. That's how much we're, that's how much we're going to use.
But I don't.
Can you help me out here and tell me what page you're talking about?
17 of 17.
It's page nine of nine.
Page nine of nine?
On the expense budget. There's two pages. So, Tony, when, when you say 17, you're talking about revenue and expense, right? For the page numbers? Because we only have page nine of nine and one of two.
Keep going.
No, I'm looking at it. I'm just asking on our copy.
I'm looking at the, the detail expense version.
Yes, so that's what you're looking at.
Yeah, okay, I got you now.
Is that more attached to the budget committee?
I just, I saw it on the other one.
So, what page is that?
I got you.
So, what page in that would it be on?
17 of 17. And it will say appendix C at the bottom of the page. The top, it says general fund expenditure details.
Where's, where is it? I'm sorry, follow that.
17 of 17.
I'm on 17 of 17.
And what we're looking at.
General government, right in the middle.
Yep.
Fund balance restoration contingency.
So, that doesn't make any, I'm not getting that. You've let it listed as a revenue and then an expense.
So, we, so if there's an expense on, if there's an expense to the town that we don't expect, we expense it through that, and we revenue it through the fund balance, through the, through the fund balance. I don't know how else to explain that. We did that no differently this past, this fiscal year for the 520,000. I just, I don't, I have to look into why it's not, the actual isn't there.
If it's fund balance.
But, just like we did with the 300,000 when we had that lawsuit, that it was expensed through that line item.
There's a difference, though, Tony. Right now, it's, when you move it to the operating budget, it becomes unrestricted.
Yeah.
It's no longer restricted. I would suggest that we didn't do a good enough job of planning in the budget. Some of my questions are around, I didn't see any future maintenance costs for the police station, or for Halliwell and scouters in the budget. We all know that those expenses are coming down the pike, and yet, we haven't budgeted them yet. So, we're going to get to a point again, we're going to have no money to do anything but defer, and that is unacceptable. I've said it before, that is fiscally irresponsible to not start putting these things into the operating budget, whether it's capital, whether it's current expenditure for a surveyor, for an engineer, for an architect, et cetera. So, I would think before we just say, let's just take the fund balance and use it as a line item, we should actually hit the departments that those budgets could be impacted by and start budgeting it. And having the tough conversation in the budget, if it's something we can do this year and next year.
Yeah, if the council would like to, you know, instead of just a one single line item that we pull from like that, dive deeper into the departments of where those expenses would lie, and that's a good exercise.
I still don't understand this. If you have, if you're showing a revenue of 75,000 that you're taking from the fund balance, and then you're showing an expense of replacing the money in the fund balance.
Right.
That's zero.
Right.
There's no change.
It pulls from, at the net, is, we pull it from the fund balance, because there's, there is no revenue. The revenue is coming from fund balance.
But you have to offset it.
I know it's hard to understand.
No, I don't think you do. I don't think this is done correctly. I really don't.
No, I don't have to, I don't have to look into it. I already did.
And when you do, and when you do have a fund balance, use of fund balance, it's usually determined when you have a particular capital improvement item, not a general operating expense. And it, I still am missing the fact that you're taking money, you're planning on getting 75,000 from the fund balance, and then you're going to, but you also are going to put 75,000 back in the fund balance. That's, to me, is zero. I don't know what I'm missing here. But, so, we can check that out, because if that's, shouldn't be this way, you're going to have to adjust your, your tax number, and you're probably going to go with a levy. Okay, so, let me see. Health and property insurance are going up big time. And that's, what I'd, what I'd like to know about that is, in all categories, has anybody explored, I mean, when we, when, the school committee can attest to this one. When we went into the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative, initially, it was a deal and a money saver. But eventually, it became more costly to send a kid to the collaborative than it was to provide the services for each district. So, they kind of like disbanded that thing, I think, didn't they? So, my fear here is, you know, is the, is the inter-local trust in that same category at this point? Have they, have we tried to see if it's competitive to go with a private vendor again? Because like they did at, you know, with the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative, they just added a whole bunch of administrators, bought new buildings, and did all this stuff, and then were charging us more money than they needed to, to get, for us to provide the services to the kids. So, they disbanded the thing. So, every once in a while, I don't see why it would hurt to go out to bid for the insurance policies on the property and the health insurance. And then maybe if you got a better deal, maybe you don't need to be in the trust. I mean, we went into the trust because it was supposed to save money. But I'd like to know, are we going to save money now? Are we still saving money? Because that, that worked out the way I said with the, with the collaborative. So, most of these agencies always eventually do that. Salaries for the town clerk, I didn't understand that, because that went up quite a bit. And I love Joanne, but I don't think it was Joanne's salaries that went up. I'm trying to figure out what it was. Town clerk?
What page are you on, please?
On page two of nine.
Two.
Two of nine.
Go over here. What? These are different?
So, I think, I think what's happening here is, there's a detailed version that
we have as well. And I don't know, Tony, was this on the website?
Just keep going further.
No, no, I'm on it.
Okay.
But is, was this also made available to the?
Oh, yeah, everything's, yeah, this is what the budget committee presented, and it's, yeah, all this is on.
Yeah, but what's that, what's that mean? I see that on what the handout I got tonight. But what does that mean? And where is that on that one, PJ? What pages are you on?
It's three of 17 on the detail, expenditure details.
Three of, page three of 17, is what you're saying?
Yeah, on the detail. There's a summary level report, there is a detail report.
Page three of 17.
Hand it out.
Yeah, I got it.
This is, I guess, on them.
Thank you. Do you have it? Okay, thank you.
Page three of 17.
Is it two? Two? Page two of 17.
Mr. St. Jean. While they're figuring out what they got to figure out, I just want to comment to you, compliment you. Mr. St. Jean, while they're figuring out what they gotta figure out, I just wanna comment to you, compliment you. I was a judge at the.
Wasn't that amazing?
Senior projects. Well, we had two kids that were going to college and we had two kids that weren't going to college and they were all equally impressive. I gotta tell you, I was thoroughly impressed with those kids. You guys did a fantastic job.
I told my group out there that I had such pride of telling you.
Can you?
Yeah. Yeah. So pass that along, please, because it was, it was, I was very enjoyable. I was like, oh, we got it. You know, we, we got four kids, twenty minutes. It went by, it flew by. It was, it was, so it was very entertaining.
Okay, so page.
I'm just, I'm just gonna ask before, cause it looks like they're leaving, does anybody else have any questions for the school department? I think there's only one other member.
Can you, can you use the mic, please, sir?
And then, and then Mike, you can go.
Sorry about that.
That unanticipated increase that Mr. Clifford mentioned, that was actually due to CTEs. I did cross over a couple of grants in the description. We had about, I think, ten or twelve new students coming to the CTE, so, at the high school, so that, that does count as revenue.
Yeah, okay.
So, Pepper, you didn't know that until the beginning of the school year?
I mean, we don't necessarily know how many who are going to apply.
Well, do we?
And likewise, we don't know how many high-cost special ed students that have to go out for, you know, clinical or, or some other outplacement. So again, we have a very fluid, we can anticipate, but we always don't get it right. August thirty-first, so we'll have, we'll have some later enrollment.
That's late, yeah.
But I meant if you had like five from this year and then anticipate next year, you're gonna have those five, but they're still in those grade levels. So is, was it an increase of that?
We had, we had a couple graduate, but of more enrolled or applied to it than we've had in the past. In fact, we actually had to shut off the applications because we had a very large eighth grade going into ninth grade, which also limited some of the seats that we could have for out of district students, the CTEs.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did, was it budgeted this year? Did you budget that as anticipated revenue? Okay.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Salaries for the town clerk, I guess I understand it now that I see that breakdown and is, they requested ten, do ten percent increase, but they're getting three and a quarter, okay. The finance department, well, maybe I should do the others first, cause I'm sure this is gonna be upsetting to some people. The deputy tax assessor is designated for a zero raise. Why is that? Everybody else is getting a raise, but there's nothing in here of that one.
Page are you on?
Anybody know?
What page are you on?
Deputy Tax Department, Lisa.
Yeah, that, that's it. My, my process has always been, people come in at the established salary at that time. After a year's time, we assess them performance-wise and then we try to suggest a raise and pay for them.
It's always been that way.
So it's this, it's a new person?
One year, it goes back to me.
New person.
Counselor Boragad, you know, it goes back through other administrators as well, so it's an established practice.
When did the new person come in?
Last week.
Oh.
Last week. When the council has room on their schedule, I'll ask the deputy tax assessor to come in and I'll introduce him. Or you can always stop in and say hello to.
Thank you. Well, how'd you, why'd you budget it zero when you made your budget in January? In the, you just started someone now.
Well, you know what, I'll have to review that before I make a statement, Mr. Clifford.
Okay, cause that didn't, that's what I, that's what I couldn't figure out. Like that was in January, you said zero. So. Okay, the overtime for police, I think, is under budgeted significantly and you're gonna run short on that one. If you look at what the, what the overtime has been, it's been going up, up, up. And you don't, I don't see where you're budgeting anywhere near enough. You're probably off by a hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Clifford, will you bring up an item? Can you reference the pages?
Well, if I had to budget, okay, I'll try to.
I think you're looking at page five of nine.
That's why I was hoping we'd do it the old way, John, so that when we get to that section, we were all on the same page.
Five of nine, right? Is that?
Is that?
On the, on the detail?
Right, the police, no, the overtime.
But they expect.
The overtime line item. You, at, you budgeted three hundred and eighty-one thousand for this fiscal year. As, in the first nine months, you spent three hundred and forty-one thousand. So if we, that's about ninety-seven thousand dollars a month, I think. No, I'm sorry, that's, yeah, I mean, that's about ten thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars. Well, bottom line is, you, you've only, you've only gotten three, you've gotten three forty-one as of the third quarter, as of three thirty-one and you're budgeting four oh eight. And if you take the three forty-one and divide it by nine and then multiply it out, I think you're gonna find that you're, it's gonna be a total of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars higher. Because if you pro-rate the months, because look what you spent last year. Last year was four hundred and sixty-five thousand, the year before that in twenty-three, and you only budgeted two hundred and ninety-five thousand. We consistently under-budget that. You budgeted two seventy-seven in the twenty-two, you spent three fifty-one. So we're on that path. So going with the four oh three, we're gonna come in short again.
That is, sorry, that, that includes detail work, the detail pay, right?
No.
That's not details?
No, that's strictly overtime. So because there's certain issues that happen throughout the year, we, we have an officer on unpaid sick leave for a long amount of time. We had an SRO that went to Rhode Island State Police. We have two vacancies. We have two full-time SROs that aren't part of the patrol ranks that fulfill the obligation of minimum manning. So that's where we come up with a lot of the overtime and it, it is sort of a guesstimation based on statistical data from the prior years. So I don't anticipate because we have two officers in the academy now, which will be graduating this Friday. They'll go through an FTO program and both those officers will fulfill the patrol ranks. So we actually have three officers that are out of the patrol ranks now because once that SRO left to go to Rhode Island State Police, we pulled a patrolman from the road. So we'd have two SROs for, for the three schools. So it, it is a guesstimation on statistical data. We're hoping that we can rectify an issue and maybe add an officer at the end of next year.
But Chief, if you've been spending more than three hundred and fifty and then four sixty-five and then, you know, this, why would you think you're only gonna be spending four oh three next year? I, I, I understand.
I just said because of vacancies.
Personnel, but there are other things.
It's, it's all about personnel. It's the amount of bodies that we need for minimum manning and the amount that.
But every year, there's other things with personnel too.
It's always something.
So why not budget for it?
I just like to keep the cost on for the taxpayers and do an educated guess as to what the cost will be next year.
Wouldn't count on it going down because you raised the salaries and everything, so it's gonna go up. So. Same thing with the dispatches, I guess. The overtime needs to go up. That's.
It's the dispatching. The reason why we have a large amount of overtime this year in dispatch is due to the fact that we, I hired our first shift dispatcher as administrative aide. We had an administrative aide to feed Alan leave employment. So she had filled out an application. She was the best person for the job. That created a vacancy, the pot-time dispatcher on the weekend. Adam Walsh took that position because he had, he was within the organization. That left a vacancy, pot-time vacancy on the weekend. We also had a trained individual that resigned at that same a few days within that week. So we had a vacancy for two months over the summer. We had an extended illness in, in the department.
Okay.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
I would still bet that that's gonna go up. The FICR for the, for the police department? It was two fifteen in twenty-two. We spent two thirty-three in twenty-three. We spent a hundred and eighty-eight thousand for the first nine months of this year, so we have three more months to go. And we're anticipating it's only gonna go up by seven thousand dollars next month over what we budgeted this year. But I think that's a number you definitely, that's one of the, those numbers that you definitely want the updated figures on because, I mean, it makes sense that as salaries go up and everything, all the fringe benefits along with them are gonna go up in cost too. Payroll taxes, everything. So I don't get how that's going down, but. And the other one, I question about police community events. What is that, that, I mean, I know, I saw the breakdown about, you know, all the activities and everything, but is that paying for supplies for those things or something, or is that paying for the office's time or what?
There's no overtime in community events.
So what's, what is that for? The, the stuff?
The breakdown is in the budget. The breakdown is in the budget.
Yeah, so, but it just says like pumpkin fest two thousand, is that like for things to?
Oh, they buy, they buy stuff to hand out to the kids and stuff and whatnot. Yeah, it's physical items. And that's another thing, all the overtime. One of the reasons why the overtime has risen is because in, I don't know how many budgets ago, maybe five, I was a captain at the time. A lot of the individual people in the department that were responsible for the budgets, I was firearms, administration, municipal court, added overtime within their budget. So we spoke with the finance director back then and he said, no, don't include any overtime, train, firearms, whatever unit of budget. So we dumped it all into overtime. So that's, that marks some increase, plus holiday pay, armed duty holiday pay, that, that proves the overtime. Just to get back to.
Part of that overtime, Chief, isn't part of that overtime, does that include the comp time earnings? Is that considered overtime?
No, no, it doesn't.
Not the payout, earnings?
No, what earnings are we talking about?
Because the payroll spread, the sheet that I got from the town financier, the payroll clerk said that, it shows that the comp time earnings was a hundred and forty-three thousand, three ninety-seven. And I thought that was, that's, that's what she listed as, comp time earnings. It was a breakout of the amounts. And I didn't know if that was in the total category of overtime or if that's a separate line.
No, comp time payoffs is budgeted separately for officers that provide the volume and the tax, you know, comp time.
Where's it budgeted separately?
It's in comp time payout.
Oh, in the detail thing?
No.
How much is it budgeted?
One, one-ten? One-ten? Am I in the right?
Sixteen-five.
Wait a minute.
What page?
The same page. Which we're on.
What same page? I wasn't on that.
Five of nine.
Five of nine, okay.
Appendix B, it says at the bottom.
Yeah.
Sixteen-five, sixteen thousand, five hundred.
No, that's the payout.
Was, well, that's what we're talking about.
Tony, do you have an answer to keep this moving?
That's what he just asked, was the comp time payout.
Yeah.
No, I didn't, I didn't have the comp time payout. I'm talking about the comp time earnings. And if you don't get it.
If we don't have an answer tonight, maybe it's something, you can make a list. We've got a lot on the agenda, I know.
Comp time is tabulated as not in the budget.
Yeah, you don't budget for that.
Okay, thank you.
But she breaks it down on payroll and I'll send you the sheet tomorrow.
Yeah.
Officers earn comp time if they don't take casual time. That's, that's not in the budget.
Yeah, Council, we don't budget for a comp time. We, we budget for a comp time payout.
Well, how do you, how do you account for the payroll sheet that I got from the, your department, ADP, showing a hundred and forty-three thousand was paid in that category? Did ADP do something wrong?
I don't, it's not my department.
So I'll, I'll send the council members what I'm looking at and what I have.
Yeah, send it, we'll pass it on to the finance director so he can look it up.
Thanks, Tony.
Okay, all right. All right, the last thing I'm gonna talk about is the, what I call, consider an outrageous raise for the finance director's position. When the town administrator, huh? Sorry. Page three of nine. The breakdown, they're proposing that the salary go up to a hundred and six thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty cents. Last year it was a hundred and one thousand, two ninety-six. And my issue with that is, I, I, I don't think, you know, I know the justification and the presentation by the budget committee chairperson, Mr. Savini, was, well, you know, he did a lot of work for us and we, we, we looked around and other districts are paying much more for finance directors and that is true. But what he didn't look at was what were the credentials of those people in the other districts that were making big bucks as finance directors? And then what were their backgrounds? When this position was posted, it was advertised as someone with a degree in accounting, which only makes sense
And finance.
overseeing an accounting department.
And finance.
No, it said accounting. Paul, I looked at the ad to make sure, just an experience in municipal, it says accounting degree required and experience in municipal government.
What does the ordinance say?
And.
Okay.
I think we should just.
Okay, so regardless, I have no, I know, no community that chose to ever hire a finance director who had no accounting background, except for two undergraduate level courses, to supervise the accounting staff. How is that person supposed to help the staff when they have the least amount of knowledge in the accounting field? So, you know, I, I, I'm tired of hearing about, you know, I can't do this, I can't do that and we need more help and all this stuff and now we're given a raise. This, this, if we couldn't find a good applicant who had the credentials that we really needed, which is an accounting degree. Well, I can't think of one of our, of our most recent, like in the last decade at least, or two decades, finance directors who didn't have a degree in accounting. And now we're, you know, we're paying for all this money and we need extra help. No, we need extra help because we don't have an accountant sitting as the department head for finance on a fifty million dollar budget. And we don't even know, I mean, I, I filed, the resume was described as, by Mr. Zelinski, as very impressive. And I didn't see anything impressive there that would ever qualify me for it.
Okay, I think we need to stick to the budget.
Point of order, listen, we're getting away from the budget here.
I, I understand, that's why I was.
Take control of them, please.
Councilor Boragad, I was just about to say, we need to get away from talking about specific jobs at this time. This is about the budget.
Sue me.
Okay, you're out of order, Mr. Clifford, and you're out of order, Mr. Administrator. I, I, hold on a second. I think we're getting way off topic here. Let's stick to the budget. If there is a discretion about anything else, that is a different topic for a different day at a different time. So if we wanna talk about the raise and what justified the raise, then I think that's a, a different conversation as well. We can discuss it. But with the lack of the budget committee here, you know, I wish there was more speaking from the chairperson. He left, I know. And I know, Tony, you've been trying to provide info. I wish there was a little more detail to some of this. But I think, I've said it before, bringing up people and talking about people and not talking about roles, I think is a path that the council should not go down at all.
I'm just correcting.
And I agree with you.
The resume was described by the, by the person who did the hiring as impressive. And I said, "My opinion is it was not impressive."
That's your opinion, but I think we need to.
So I'm justifying that for why we, we're, we're being asked to pay someone more money when there are people in other positions that they're comparing him to, that comparing that position to, that are, have far more credentials.
And that's a question for the Budget Committee.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you want to put my two cents in here, but I, I'm tired by different municipalities to go in and find a finance director. And I can tell you that it's extremely difficult to find a finance director. I have to, I have to make point calls. And I don't know, I'm just saying, I don't know if, you know, I'm not saying specifically him. But what I'm saying is you need to pay your finance director.
That's right. And I don't have a problem with that, Jim.
Mr. Clifford, please let Mr. Lombardi speak, and then you can respond.
You have to go out, there's no, at least, I have been able to find a governmental person to go and find this. So that's, you know, that, that's an issue. The second thing is, you've got to come back, beg them to come in and apply. We put, I, I have to call contacts and go, "Please, please, you've got to get the guy down here to apply." I'm just saying, it's very difficult to get a finance director. There's 38 cities and towns above, is right now, probably five towns without a finance director. And all they do is switch around. And it's very dangerous, and it's, it's, it puts holes in these municipalities. So I'm just giving you my.
Well, then if we were going to, okay.
Okay.
Mr. President.
But I, I don't have a problem with paying $150,000 to someone, provided they have the qualifications, the skill level, and the experience.
Okay, Mr. Clifford, I think we're getting way off topic here. This is about the budget, not about the job or the role. That is a different conversation for a different day. If you are done with your comments on the budget, then.
I think I am done for tonight. Thank you very much.
Vice President, would you like me to comment?
I believe the Administrator wanted to say something, and then I'll let you talk, Tony.
Thank you.
Mr. Administrator.
Thank you. So, Mr. President, I just want to clarify some of Mr. Clifford's saying. You know, he did not read off what the detail was. There was an ask of a very high amount, and I suggested 5%. If you recall last year's budget, when someone had worked for the town for a year, they were put in for 5% to keep, to bring them up, not to parity, but close. As Mr. Lombardi said, there are communities right now, five of them searching for a finance director. We had three applications when we went through this process. Two were offered the job, two declined. So this is, this is imperative that not only do you attract them, you need to retain them. And they'll jump ship for remuneration, for a different packet. So it is very difficult for all positions. I'm going to name it, whether it be a town clerk, whether it be a building official, whether it be a tax assessor, whether it be a planner. It's very difficult to attract people and then retain them. So I put down 5%. It's not something I haven't done in the past for people that have worked for the town for one year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Tony.
I obviously put in 17%, knowing I wasn't going to get 17%. It was just a statement to reflect how underpaid governmental employees are. I don't want 17%. I mean, yeah, more money would be nice, but I don't want 17%. It's not what I did it for. It was to make a statement of the fact that I did a linear regression analysis based off the population of all the municipalities throughout the state and the budget size of all the municipalities throughout the state. And based on our population and our budget size, a finance director should be getting paid what you see there, 118. I would much more prefer an extra half body in my department than even the 5%. So that's just my statement towards the outlandish 17%.
Thanks, Tony. Does anybody have any other questions?
No, but I'm, for the record, disappointed that the Budget Committee isn't here to help answer some questions. I mean, they just left, which is very unusual and not sure why.
I gotta say, the whole thing's unusual that they asked.
It's very unusual.
We should be having a separate meeting just for the budget, like we've always done. A separate meeting just for the budget, announce it, advertise it, and then that's all we talk about that night is the budget.
I don't disagree with you.
I just replicated the process of what we did last year.
I'm not blaming you.
No, 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 I'm just saying, we, we had a, the open, the public hearing was within a regularly scheduled council meeting. So I just did the same thing as last year. We, we can change it going forward.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I agree. It doesn't have anything to do with you, Tony, but I think, maybe just going forward, I think then it needs to be better coordinated.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm fine with having it early, and maybe we advertise that it's more than one public hearing, there may be multiple.
Yeah. There was, I will take some fault in it because I hadn't let, I had mistakenly didn't let the school committee know in time. Thankfully, they pulled together some information pretty quickly for us over the weekend. So I commend them on that. But there, you know, there were some, balls dropped on my end, in terms of communication about the public hearing to other department heads. So I will take fault for that.
Also, I think that the public isn't, at the public hearing.
Yeah.
Which is very disconcerting to me because, you know, we don't have a town financial meeting anymore where people can weigh in. And this is really the only place where, you know, Mr. Clifford is the only person here tonight, and he monopolizes the time. But he brought up issues that, you know, so I think if we had something that was a different day or, you know, was more well-publicized, because there was nothing.
Well, it's also early.
If the council desires, I can advertise it, and we can hold another at the next meeting. It's.
I think it might make sense to readvertise. I mean, it's, it's an extra expense. But I also think when we change.
I have it in my budget.
When we change the date, and now it's earlier than normal, you know, people may think, like, June, like, you know.
Yeah, normally it's early June.
It comes up early. So it may be beneficial to look at that expense.
I can do that. Yeah, and then I'll have some more backup as far as some of the questions that were posed tonight.
Yeah, we may have to, I mean, we may have to look at this again and see if we can, I mean, 331 really doesn't give us an accurate figure to work with.
That was supposed to.
You know, I know it helps to push the whole process forward and make it quicker.
Well, the reason I didn't update those figures is because the council wasn't going to make a decision on their budget until later in June. I planned on updating, I was just talking to Jeri Ann about it today, that, you know, as soon as we have, as soon as the turn of the month comes in, I have to let all the departments know, "I need all your figures as soon as possible." Because I was planned on updating all through 11 months to the council before the council decided to start making decisions.
Yeah, and I think having, you know, what PR means about this is not just putting, you know, an ad in the classified section of some newspaper, but putting it in the newsletter, if you would, Mr. Administrator, and maybe sending out a special blast specifically for that. If we have Facebook, if we have whatever we do, we should put everything out there to let people know that this is their one and only chance to come in. Because I think people will be disappointed that, you know, they didn't have an opportunity to weigh in. Maybe not, maybe it won't make a difference, but, you know, I think we, we should afford them that opportunity.
Tony, I also have a couple of questions, and I'll just make them, and you can get back to me. The first one is, is it possible to get a breakout by vendor, total expenses, fiscal year-to-date? I know they're split sometimes across the departments, but is it possible, like, what the total Amazon spend is, what the total WB Mason spend is?
I'd have to see if E-Finance can populate that as a, I'd have to, I don't know if my, my accounting system does that yet.
My other question is, is, and I know we're talking about it later on, but, and I know, the only reason I'm asking now is because it probably relates more to budget, is, and I know it came up at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, but for trash, there was a discussion that the town may be able to purchase additional, I'm going to call them units, but trash, like recycling containers and/or trash containers for the town. I know there's a cost savings there, I don't know if it's worth, but I would like to see what the cost would be to purchase two recycling for each mem, for each household. Ideally, you would see two trash and two recycling. So if we can do that as well, that would be great. But since we're looking at the budget again and it's not final, if we can do that, that might be helpful.
Yeah, I'll coordinate with DPW and see if that's, is something that we can look at. I'm not sure, I'm not versed in.
Yeah, Ray mentioned it a while ago, and I know there's more to come on it, but I just figured I'd ask as we talk about the budget.
Yeah, I'm not fully versed in the details of, like, bins and everything, but I can, we can take a look at it.
Yeah, thanks, Ray. Thanks, Tony.
Short. I have a question. I'm wondering if Mr. Cleody might have the answer for us. The offset that we're receiving from the state for the tangible, new tangible reimbursement for the small accounts that we've been no longer getting the tax from, the state this year is reimbursing us for that. But does the legislature that was written that approved that guarantee that we're going to get that every year from here on in? Or was that, is it just for this year?
My understanding is, the number you get this year is frozen in time.
But is it enacted in legislation?
It's enacted in legislation, but it's frozen in time, meaning whatever you get from the state, that's the amount you get next year and next year, even though theoretically.
Yeah, it could be losing more.
All right. So there's going to be some downside for all cities and towns.
Definitely.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thanks.
That's, that's the way legislation reads now.
No, that's what I was, I was correct.
Any other questions?
No.
Everyone good?
No, good, thank you.
All right, so we're, we're going to continue the public hearing, I would think. So do we know what date the next meeting would be?
June 3rd.
June 3rd, so I'll ask for a motion to extend the public hearing until June 3rd.
So, Mr. VP, certainly you can do that. But are you going to request about the advertisement? I mean, don't continue to a date certain and not do all the advertisement that you're suggesting, unless you don't care about the advertisement.
If we're going to advertise, then just end this and.
No, I'm just suggesting to you, make sure that, don't continue to a date certain and not, not.
Oh, yeah, no, date certain and readvertise.
Can the advertisement meet that deadline, is my question, I guess. It's a clerk question.
See where we're going, David.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you do?
But I can, yeah, I can.
Can you make it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
We'll have a Friday between now and.
As long as we have other options other than that only.
Yeah, we'll put it in the newsletter, we'll.
Well, sure. This is a question for the clerk. I know you mentioned there's a few public hearings on the 3rd. Is it possible to have it another day?
Because that would be.
Well, are you suggesting that we have it in another council meeting again?
We have, like, three public hearings on the, that's what I'm wondering. I don't think it makes sense to have it on the 3rd.
We're going to have the same row as we have now.
We're going to have a worse problem on the 3rd.
We have to have a separate meeting for the budget. We should have already, that's, that's what, the first meeting should have just been a separate meeting.
That's what I'm asking. I think if we're going to have another public hearing, we need to figure out the date and then readvertise for, because I don't. I think.
The ship sailed, I think.
Yeah, that's probably true.
Do you want to have it on the 3rd?
Yeah, I, I, I think we're all saying the same thing, that, you know, there may not be as much interest because it's anticlimactic at this point, so.
Okay, so we'll keep it on the 3rd then. So then the motion, if somebody can have it, would be to continue the public hearing and readvertise for June 3rd.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
No, second.
Can I just make a comment?
Please.
I believe last year we had the public hearing, and then we continued it to the night of the budget. But that's an option as well.
Yeah, I think we'll continue the public hearing as well.
So you want to continue it to the third meeting or the date, the actual budget is on the 10th?
I think we need to continue it to the 3rd, and then we can determine if we continue it. Because I know usually there's still questions, and I think that's when we usually continue as well. Thanks, Joey.
Mr. Lombardi.
Yeah, so you said, "Can we advertise?"
Yes.
You can say, well, I'm just saying, subject to it being possible, because I think it's 10 plus 3. You're right on that line of whether you can get it back from there. That was my question.
Okay, so, so then I'll amend the motion to subject to advertising.
I think we can make the advertisement deadline.
I mean. For the advertisement, it's already been advertised, though, right?
Right.
So, I mean, if we don't make the Valley Breeze, there's still the call, there's still, there's still other venues.
So it's just re-advertising for notice, not only.
Re-advertising for notice, correct.
It's re-advertising for notice.
And can we, can we, can we suggest if it doesn't, if we continue the budget hearing to the evening that you delivered the budget meeting?
Yeah, the adoption.
Right.
We're doing it both ways.
You have the budget hearing first and then the adoption re-adoption.
Yeah.
Because that takes a meeting.
Yeah, you, yeah, the adoption was its own meeting last, that's what was the plan. The plan was the 10th for the, to adopt it. But the public hearing was within a regularly scheduled.
So when was the budget meeting?
The 10th, the following Monday from the next meeting that we had.
Okay, then let's just do that, then. It's one week, what's one week?
Okay.
That will eliminate a public hearing at that meeting.
Would, would the council like me to provide information on the next meeting as far as points that were brought up tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
In case more questions come up.
And if, and, okay, well, let's.
Yeah, we can talk about the scheduling later. All right, so then I will.
We draw the motion.
I'll draw the motion and make a new motion to continue the public hearing until June 10th.
I'll draw my second.
And second.
Yeah, she withdrew.
I withdrew. It's withdrawn.
But I thought you just made a motion to continue to June 10th.
No, I made a motion to continue to, to the 10th. And then we need a second.
Second?
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Biergad.
He's going to say, what do we want?
So they are extending the public hearing to June 10th?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes. Okay. All right, moving on. All right, discussion vote or other action on payment of bills. Does anybody have any questions? I don't have any.
Oh, I, it's a tangible question. Page one on the check register.
Mm-hmm.
Cox Communications, tangible overage of $85,849.
Yeah, they, yeah, they sent, we, me and Paul dug into that. They really messed up on what they sent us, and we don't, they automatically pay it. So we had to pay them back.
They sent us too much, is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, some money on their, on their side royally messed up on that one.
Wow.
We, we gave them the option to allow them to spread it over the next, you know, X amount of payments. But they wanted the reimbursement, yep.
Thank you, that's it for me.
Is there any other questions? All right, bearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the payment of bills.
Make a motion to approve the payment of bills in the amount of 2, 2 million, I was going to say 2,000, 2,930,304.86.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Biergad.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Ogier.
Yes. All right, next up, discussion by council vote or other action on consent agenda. All items listed in this section are considered in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. A, Town Council minutes of April 15th and May 6, 2024. B, Communications Animal Control monthly report for April of 2024. NSFNR monthly report for April of 2024. NS Municipal Court monthly report for April of 2024. And NS PD monthly report for April of 2024. Does anybody have anything they wish to remove?
No, but I have a question. Can I ask a question now or after?
Probably just remove it.
Okay.
Do you want to remove anything? Do you want to remove anything?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Anybody want to remove anything?
All right, if there's nobody, nobody wishes to remove anything, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Roll call.
Mr. Biergad.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Ogier.
Yes. New business, discussion vote or other action on abatements and supplementos, Ms. St. George.
Hi. So first I have abatements in the amount of $5,895.92.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? No?
No.
Alright, so if there's no questions, we'll take them individually. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the real estate, motor vehicle, and personal property abatements in the amount of $5,895.92.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
And then next I have supplements in the amount of $4,192.60.
Is there any questions?
What, am I, it's the same amount, it's on, on the abatements?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. For...
Yeah, it is.
It is.
I have it.
It is.
It's the first one on the...
4192 and on the other page, 419260.
Yeah, for the top one.
Yeah.
So we're, it was under the wrong account number and owner, so we're abating it and supplementaling it to the new correct owner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, that explains it. Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental real estate, motor vehicle, and tangible tax in the amount of $4,192.60.
Second?
Uh, roll call.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up on the new business, discussion by council vote or other action on Town Council Member Volunteer to Serve on the Ad-Hoc Zoning Ordinance and Subdivision Regulation Update Advisory Committee. Uh, Mr. Carrulo, he's not here, so I don't... Mr. Administrator, do you have anything on this or...
I can really put, the planner is looking for, it was addressed to Council President, looking for a member of the Town Council to serve on that board. It asks for people, staff members that frequently use the zoning ordinance as a member and looking for... You have it yet, do you not?
Yeah, I just did not yet anything else to add.
No, that's basically it.
Okay.
So, I'd rather wish to have someone have input and to... That's it.
Okay, thank you.
You want me to read it in, so, do you know what it is?
Yeah, you can read it.
So I'd just like to read it into the record. Council President Als, this is for, from the planner Mark Carrulo. Planning Office in consultation with Innis Associates, a consultant assisting with the zoning and subdivision regulation update. Is creating an ad hoc working committee to review the proposed changes to the zoning and planning regulations. The committee will consist of individuals who regularly work with the regulations and will provide input on the proposed changes prior to submission to the planning board and Town Council for review and approval. I am writing to determine if the Town Council may be interested in assigning a Town Council member to participate in the review committee. The committee will meet both remotely and in person as updates are available for review. There will likely be three to four meetings for each document, zoning and planning. Comments can also be provided in writing in lieu of attending a particular meeting. The purpose is to consider different perspectives, experiences in dealing with local regulations. The statutes are very prescriptive in some areas, leaving little or no room for interpretation, but can be somewhat subjective in other areas. It is those subjective areas where the group's input will be most valuable. And it'll be the Town Solicitor, the Assistant Planner Building Official, Assistant Zoning, Planning Board Chair, Zoning Board Chair, the Town Planner, and if so, a Town Council Member.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody wish to serve on it?
Not tonight, I don't want to make that decision.
I don't mind stepping forward on it if nobody else wishes to serve. I know when we did the water overlay district, we looked at a lot of the new state changes, so I don't mind.
And when he says interpretation, the existing laws that aren't really imposed to begin with, let's clear them off or enforce them.
No, they're new regulations.
I think, I think the intent is, yeah, there's new changes at the state level to which you have to look at the land use table and a whole bunch of other things, so I think that's part of the exercise. I'm sure David can probably fill in more as he currently serves on it, but I think that's the intent, correct?
Correct, there, the new law provides changes that shall be made with no discretion whatsoever. Then there's another category of changes that are left to your discretion, and that's where you both have to make mandatory changes and then you have to go into area two. So there is some work, a lot of work for that committee to do before it gets to the council.
Okay, so you are, are you volunteering?
I'll volunteer if there's nobody else. I mean, I think it's important that there is a council representation on it.
Okay, I agree. Okay, so, can let the planner know then that...
You might, wait, sorry.
So, Mr. VP, one, I would have the council actually, you know, just identify you as being, in that, holding that role, and two, I did notice a comment about meeting remotely and I don't believe the committee can do that.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll talk to the planner about that. I don't believe there's any law that allows even an ad hoc committee to meet remotely.
Okay, perfect.
Although that would be convenient, right?
The law, the state should change.
Okay, congratulations.
So you need a motion, so if somebody...
I would do that only because, I would do that only because you're serving on behalf of the council, that should be supported by the council, that you're designated as the council member serving on the committee.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the generous willingness of Mr. Ogier to yet add another thing to his plate and join the ad hoc working committee to review the proposed changes to the zoning and planning regulations.
Uh, is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, roll call.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes. Thanks, everyone. Thank you. Uh, next up, discussion by council vote or other action on Contract Renewal Employee Assistance Program, Ms. Sanjo Ange.
Um, this is just to allow the administrator to sign for EAP. I think there wasn't any uses of this in this last year, but prior to that, there were three uses of this program, so it's, as you can read, it's offered to the employees. If they need any help, they contact them directly and they start some type of program based on what their needs are.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to make sure people are aware of it.
Anytime there's any information that gets sent out, it gets blasted out to all the employees, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the annual fee of $2,800 to Coastal, Coastline EAP, 931 Jefferson Boulevard in Warwick for contracted services for behavioral health model.
And authorize the administrator...
I'm sorry, thank you. And authorize the administrator to sign the new contract.
Is that a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes. And then, Tony, for these next ones, we'll take them one at a time. Discussion by council vote or other action on budget transfers. First up is EMA.
Yes, so, overall, for all three of these, we, it's one of the initiatives, I'm trying to make sure that none of the line items are over. Obviously, there's some things I won't be able to cover within the departments, but this is one of them. So the way, the reason that this is going over is because the department heads will set their own budgets within their department. This is one of the ones that wasn't budgeted properly, so we're correcting it for that individual.
Are you referencing software and licenses? Is that, that's the first one we're looking at?
No, the EMA.
The first one, alright, so they're not in order, I guess, okay.
Okay, so, hold on.
At the top left of each one has...
Yeah, the top one we have is for the municipal court.
Yeah, it's two, and you just go in three pages, you'll see it. It's on the, it's on the reverse side.
Is it this one?
No, it's actually...
Oh, they're plucked and printed.
Yeah, it's duplex printed, so just go in three, go to the back.
I don't see it.
So we're pulling money from a couple of different sources just to cover the public utilities.
Do you see it? Do you have it? I don't think I have it.
I just have an email.
It, it should be.
Yeah, it's in.
One, so, go three pages, third page, flip it over, it's duplex printed, it's on the back.
Is it all that, is it this?
No.
No, that's, well, that's, that's backup, that's backup, but yeah, it looks like the one you just had, VP.
I have municipal court, an email from Tim Lafferty, Chief Lafferty, and then a finance one, and then the detail.
Yeah, it should be in there. It's, I downloaded the...
No, no. I have municipal court.
Yeah, the clerk has it.
This one?
Yep.
Finance?
Yep.
And then on the backup.
Yeah, I don't have it.
Oh, there it is, okay. Pages are out of order.
Last one.
It got printed to a backup, it's okay. It's on the back of...
Thank you.
Okay, figured it out.
It's going to bite you, but so close.
Alright.
Okay.
EMA. Any questions?
If there's no questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the budget transfer of $1,100.
As presented.
As presented.
So I do have a quick question, public utilities. It means, what are we referencing when we say public?
Gas, electric, the, the department resides here, so we divide up the cost of utilities via the department. So, you know, his share, he, it was budgeted less than...
So it was under budgeted, is what you're saying? Okay. Alright, I'll make a, a motion to approve the transfer of $1,100. Um, what am I doing here?
Dues and subscription, oh, sorry.
Oh, so just go by, well, I guess, okay, so dues and subscription for $100, education and training for $200, communication utilities for $800. Two, public utilities, $100, public utilities $200, and public utilities $800, for a total of $1,100 transfer.
As a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Sorry, uh, roll call.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes. Alright, next up is finance.
Finance is the, is the overtime that was expressed that we needed to cover, and then communication utilities, obviously not something that was anticipated when making this budget. I wanted a, I requested a work cellphone, because I don't want my personal cellphone subpoenaed in any type of lawsuit, so I requested one and this is the, that expense that I'm trying to cover from our professional services.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve a transfer from professional services for $485 and from professional services also in the amount of $1,096.32 to cover payroll overtime, to communication utilities for $485 to cover finance department cellphone and to cover overtime, and that would also be in finance for $1,096.32, for a total debit of $1,581.32.
I'll second for just discussion. Just real quick, because I know I work in healthcare, which is also very regulated with HIPAA, and I know in a lot of the settings, even within the state, it's a lot of bring your own device, and they use an authenticator app, and there's abilities for the phone to be managed on a personal device, so I don't know if, maybe if it's worth looking into with Vertical Six, how do those programs work? Because we may already be paying for licenses that we could be using.
We, as far as the, because this got put on with the FirstNet, which is through AT&amp;T, with all the other, so it was cheaper to go through that route than for it to, because then now, at that point, I would be, I would be needing a stipend for my cellphone, if I was going to be using my personal cellphone.
Yeah, and I'm fine with approving the transfer, I'm just saying, I know in some places you always get a stipend, so that's why I was, I'm fine with it done right now. Just looking into that, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, I believe, so roll call.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes. Alright, up next is the Police Department.
Pretty subtle, explanatory.
Oh, the Municipal Court, I guess.
Make a motion to approve the transfer from software and licenses, Municipal Court at the department request of $2,000 to overtime dispatch, $2,000 for a total of $2,000 debit.
Uh, that's a motion, is there a second? I'll second, oh, there's a second by Claire, so roll call.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes. Thanks, Tony. Up next is discussion by council vote or other action, amending contract for trash pickup. Mr. Biragad?
Yeah, I asked for this to be put on the agenda. I've never received more comments and questions, and there was a lot of confusion regarding the new trash program that we have coming forward. We can't change the contract. I was looking into the possibility of, because we have a contract with, what's this company again?
Waste, Waste Management.
Waste Management. We can't change the contract. We can't even ask them to give us a price to keep it the way it is, because I guess it's too complicated. So anyway, this is what we have. What I'm going to suggest, and I was talking with the administrator about this, is I know we have informational flyers or something going out to everybody, but I would like to suggest a public hearing, but just a public, a very informal public meeting with representatives from Waste Management there, maybe one that can answer all the people's questions, because there's a lot of questions. And like I said, very informal, maybe we can do it on a Saturday or, you know, a Tuesday or Wednesday night, but just so people can, we can answer, because I couldn't answer, you know, some of the questions that people had, I'm like, I, I don't know either. So I, I do hear that Waste Management is a very good company to work with and that they would be very amenable to a possible meeting in public with, with, with everybody to answer questions, so I would suggest that we set something like that up. We can do it here, we can do it at the middle school, I don't know if you think that would be well attended. I think there would be quite a bit in attendance, I don't know if this would be too small though. What do you think?
Yeah, I think it may be, if it's, we'll certainly promote it in the newsletter, maybe pollinate the story with the press. Yeah, I think it may be, if it's, we'll certainly promote it in the newsletter, maybe pollinate the story with the press. The thing is, Director of Public Works knows all those folks at Waste Management. We certainly could have a quite, we just have a, something like that to happen. You saw it tonight, when Veterans of Fire and War Commander McMillan got up and said, "What are we gonna do with my barrels?" So, that's a new one, I didn't hear that one, but I, I knew that some people, people have mobility challenges, were worried about rolling it out. We, really, we should have a question and answer period, I support that.
I think the recycling thing is gonna, I think they'll realize that's fine, those, those containers are gonna hold a lot. I think what we're gonna have to get used to is the overflow, the stuff that doesn't fit...
Oh, yeah.
In your, in your garbage, what do you, you know, how do you get rid of it? But that's all stuff that could be answered at a public hearing, or just a very informal public meeting. I'd suggest the council can all be there, anybody who wants to attend, we can advertise it, and hopefully it's a good turnout.
So, I'm not sure, when's the contract kicking directly, do you, uh?
July first, I believe.
July, oh, we, yeah, we have time. Yeah, I just wanna make sure for publication and whatnot.
Yeah.
Not really quite sure why everybody's a little confused there, because whoever calls my office, it's addressed, and they get their answers directly from us. So, if any questions go to the administrator's office, they should be coming to me. And if they're going to you and you can't answer it, it should be coming to me. It's very simple. Flyers going out this week, I'll answer the question about the additional trash. We already have a policy that addresses, you're limited to two thirty-five gallon containers. So, if anybody's leaving more trash, which half this town is, they should be cited at curbside. And the company that we have presently does not do that. So, this isn't anything new, this is a, a, a policy that's already in effect. You're gonna get a sixty-four gallon container, if you have more trash from a potty or whatever, you can purchase five bags for ten dollars, and those bags will be picked up by Waste Management. As for the recycling bin, every other week, you can get two, you can purchase a second, you can purchase a third, you can purchase a fourth. But not trash, just recycling. But flyers are going out, addressing all of this, and then there's gonna be another mail drop, I think the middle of June. All of the trash containers have been addressed by us, by many residents who have called us. And once they call us, and we explain all of the, the answers to them, people are satisfied. Like, it's kinda getting blown out of proportion, but the people who are blowing it out of proportion should be addressing the concerns to me, not into the press, where the press, and they recanted their statements was totally wrong. So, uh, we can have a, we can have two public hearings, it doesn't matter. It, it's being addressed daily, my call, we, we, that's all we're doing lately, is addressing these calls. It's not really as bad as everybody's making it out to be. We're one of the last communities to automate, which, I can't believe this.
Ray, I have two quick questions. So, I think part of what happens is, is I think going back to when we awarded the contract, there was some confusion over if one was automated and one was not automated. But the way I remember you presenting it was they were both automated going forward, correct?
Trash and recycling.
Trash and recycling. So, it wasn't like we were gonna be able to always leave it like it was, we were going automated regardless, I think that is important to clarify.
And let's, let's, let's go back to the day of, the bid, the procurement process was given two options, there were two bids, that was presented to the council. So, the council had the option of going with option one or option two. My recommendation was option two, the every other recycling, saving the town eighty, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars over the course of five years. Personally, you wanna go week, week to week, and pay the extra million dollars? That was the council's decision at the time, that's not what the council decided.
My, my other question is just following up from earlier, if it is possible just to find out if, what the cost would be to purchase an extra recycling container?
We have that, and that's going out into the flyer.
For, but, I mean, the town purchases it, so it's not the sixty-five dollars for the household. So, you would get two recycling and one trash, if that's possible.
So, each, each household is getting one of each?
Right, but is it possible to provide each household two recycling and one trash?
So, they're already getting a trash?
I understand. I'm asking if we provide them a second recycling?
A second recycling.
I know you mentioned it a while back, so I just figured, as we're looking at the budget, so what the cost would be for that?
They're gonna have to add to the budget.
But I'm not, yeah, I'm just trying to find out the cost of it.
I don't know how, and, but, this is, and, and, and these are all the things that have been addressed, that I've already reached out to. Your Laura Woods, over fifty-five community, they don't want the ninety-six every other week. There are either one person, two people, retired, not living in the state in the winter months, they want a sixty-four and a sixty-four. So, we, we've, we've addressed the condominium units, we've addressed the elderly, who have this thing in their head that they can't roll a sixty-four gallon container. My mother's eighty-nine years old in Warwick, and she does it. So, and their, and their barrels are the old ninety-six thousand gallon, it's ninety-six gallons.
But I know there's also a lot of young...
Could be ninety-six thousand.
I know there's also, the reason I'm asking is I know there's also a lot of younger families that have a lot of recycling, and I know that is the main concern, is the recycling, I would say. And so, that's why I'm just asking if, you know, if there is the ability, what that cost would look like, that's why I was asking earlier.
But you're saying if someone wanted that, if they requested it upfront?
Right.
That you would wanna know at least...
The town would provide it.
That we would pay that one extra...
And we have that cost.
Okay, yeah.
We have the cost for the sixty-four and the ninety-six. I, I, I'd have to go through my paperwork, but it's like, maybe sixty dollars, don't quote me, I've got that number.
Okay.
So, as it is right now, the program we're pushing out is two free ones, sixty-four and ninety-six. If you want an additional recycling, whether you think you're gonna just do an additional sixty-four, or an additional ninety-six, that's your call, the resident.
Right, I'm asking for three free ones, what does that cost likely? For two tra, two recycling and one trash?
Well, you get one and one for free.
So, these are the questions?
So, you, you, so...
No options.
So, so to get one additional recycling?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can either get a sixty-four gallon or a ninety-six gallon.
But what is it, to the, what is the cost to the town if they provide it to the resident for free?
That cost is going, as of right now, that cost is going to the resident.
Correct.
Okay, I guess, I just wanna make sure I'm clear what I'm asking.
I'm not budgeted to...
Right, and so, as we're looking at the budget, since we have to still look at it, I just wanna know what that cost would be, for an additional one to each household.
So, let's just say sixty dollars for a ninety-six.
Yep.
And, and I, I wanna say fifty-four and ninety-six, but, uh, sixty, fifty-four and sixty for the two containers. I have no idea how to budget that, because I don't know who's gonna request an additional one.
Demand wouldn't be known.
What would the total households be that would get it?
You'd have to budget for everyone getting it, but they, not everyone will, some, some people don't even want them, you know, because they're large.
Well, we have resi, we have residents that don't even want the ninety-six.
And the reason I'm asking is I know some communities, when they rolled out automated in the past, there was grants to help offset that cost. So, you know, if you got three of them, maybe it's then, okay, well, now we know it's an additional, like, a hundred thousand dollars, now we can go for a grant so that everybody gets two recycling and one trash, or, you know what I mean? So, it would just be good to know.
I, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
What we're telling residents right now, because of the confusion that's out there, is that we're letting the first two weeks happen. And then, the supervisors that are out there are gonna come back to us and say, resident A, B, and C, they've got way too much recycling. So, now, we know that we can address those people. And then you have other people who aren't going to have that much recyc, so we need a couple of weeks to see how it all irons out.
Makes sense.
The trash, I, I, I need to address this trash issue, because I, I'm hoping to, to quell the confusion. I was on the phone this afternoon with Resource Recovery, and for the last two years, they have reduced the cap allotment to all municipalities by six percent. Last year was six, for the last two years, six percent, going into FY twenty-five, and twenty, twenty-five is gonna be another six percent reduction. And what that means is, we now pay fifty-eight, fifty a ton. If we go over our tonnage, which right now we're at eighty percent, and we have two months remaining, we will be at our cap or almost over our cap. That goes to a hundred and fifteen dollars a ton. This is what people aren't, they're not getting. So, now, they're gonna reduce it another six, six percent, in the new contract that goes out next year. That's another two hundred and some tons that we're losing on our cap. That means we pay a hundred and fifteen dollars a ton, not sixty-three dollars, which will go into effect July first. So, when some people try to tell me that I'm trying to reduce their trash, yes, I am. Because I'm trying to reduce the cost that the homeowner's gonna have to foot if we continue throwing everything in the world curbside, which first off is violation of our policy, and second, it's gonna cost a lot of money. Sixty-three dollars, as opposed to a hundred and fifteen, is a lot of money. So, if we wanna let everybody throw everything, we're gonna have a problem financially.
All right, so, this exchange with Doug only proves my point. I, I'd really like to have a, a public meeting.
Yeah.
If they're, if they're willing to do it.
Oh, they will, I, I'm sure they will.
I've heard they're very good to work with.
Fantastic, I mean, they're a global company, this is not their first rodeo.
Right.
And they have all, they have more answers than I do.
Now, would you like to help facilitate that, or you want me to ask the administrator, like?
Oh, I can, I deal with them every day.
Okay, perfect.
I mean, they've already ordered five hundred thousand dollars in carts. Already ordered and marked with our insignias on it. So, the buses, as we say, the buses already left the terminal.
Right.
So, it's just a matter of putting it all in place now. And then I think it's the first two weeks where I'm scheduling some of my employees to pick up curbside from the residents, any trash recycling bin, bins that they don't want. Because we can dispose of those at Resource Recovery under rigid plastics.
Oh, good.
That answers the, the commander's question.
And I told him that.
Did you, good, thanks.
Well, so if we could just get a couple of dates from them, and you and everybody, and we can come up with a, something in the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, let me try and see if we can get a couple of weeks, because they got the, the drop this week, I think, is going out, and then, I think the middle of June. But, a lot of information, but they can certainly, because there's questions on white good pickups, bulky pickups, there's all sorts of questions. Nothing's changing, nothing's being done away with or reduced, it's just a matter of putting it together. People's pickup dates, collection dates are still the same, same routes, so, I think it's looking pretty good. But I'm a positive guy, I'm not a negative guy.
Thanks, Ray.
Like that, CJ, huh?
You're gonna make it clear for that one.
I'm just gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion to extend the meeting fifteen minutes.
We have one more, right?
What, do you think ten, fifteen is good?
Five is better.
Well, we'll just leave it fifteen, just to be safe. All right, that's a motion, is there a second?
To, what was the...
Extend the meeting by fifteen minutes.
Uh, I'll second the motion.
Uh, roll call? I just made a motion to extend fifteen, and then Paulette made a motion to, uh, seconded it, sorry, seconded it. You're good, Joey.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes, okay, last item, discussion by council vote or other action on award of bid for audit of town school financial statements. Mr. St. George?
Uh, so this is, so I had sent everyone in the council, the entire bid submissions from both Markham and Bacon. Hopefully, the council had, was able to go through, read through it, look at the details, and then I also provided just a little bit more backup. You have Markham's breakdown of cost each year, and then you have Bacon's breakdown of cost each year. So, you can see why that there's a difference in, in cost and man-hours and everything like that, so... I did reach out to the OAG's office to be sure that we would be fine with going this route, and they said it would be fine. I've already gotten their approval for Bacon and Company. I mean, if we decided not to go with them, I'd have to recontact them and see if they would allow it. But, that is the current standing.
So, may I, Mr. President? So, I ha, I've been thinking about different things, and one of the, I would like to see us move to a different firm. I know we're under the gun, we had a bid that went out, and we didn't get very many people and all that other stuff. But, um, is it possible to do one year with Markham?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Uh, it's, it's set by the OAG's office that you do three, that you do three years. And I've heard from Mark...
We would do three years of, of an audit, but does it have to be with the same auditing firm? Is that the requirement? There is a requirement for that?
Yeah, that's with, I can double-check with OAGs, but I'm, that's... I don't, yeah, I don't know, yeah, that's...
The auditor general basically controls that audit situation, you need to advertise, bro.
It's a whole process, I had to go through quite a bit. Fun, so, and just to, um, from what I've heard from other municipalities too, this may seem biased, but I heard that Markham isn't the best.
Well, I don't think we should talk about, happens...
But I, that's not, you know, either way.
Yeah, I think we gotta be careful what we say, I think there's reasons we're getting so few bids, so...
Yeah, no, but that's...
I mean, you know, this...
Either way, the, but, either way, the...
I think if you're gonna review credentials, you need to go into executive session.
Yeah, I don't, I think we gotta be careful.
Either way, the, the lowest bidder is, is Bacon.
I think the comments of the finance director do not reflect the, the full commentary of the town.
Yeah, understood.
Of any potential bidder.
Understood, so, it's up to the council whether you...
So, how, how, we, how, why don't we re-advertise?
If we do that, they, if you had seen in the bids, they start July one, based on timing.
No, I know it's tight, I realize that, but, I mean, I think it's incumbent upon us, if we're all in the same boat, and we all feel that we wanna have a different auditing firm, I think it's, it really is in our best interest.
I can go, yeah, we can go out to rebid.
You know, and the other thing is, you said BidNet was the only thing that you put in on a, BidNet, is that the only game in town? Or are there other options, is that something that goes universally across the...
Yeah, there's one other one that I, that I know other municipalities use that's free, and that's nationwide as well.
Well, even if we have to pay, I would rather have more options than getting...
Well, the, the other ones that, that you pay for don't really provide any more, uh, there, there's no difference, really. It's, all municipalities use either, either and/or, BidNet, or, I think it's like Gov-something, something with Gov in it, in the name. It's been a while since I've looked at it. But, we can go, but the problem with rebidding is now both of these companies know what each other bid. So, now Bacon can just be like, oh, you know, so you're gonna reconsider, so maybe let's do one sixty-five. That's, that's the problem with rebidding. And we've been in this situation, when I, when I had a situation with the school, where we didn't end up going through with something, because first time we bid, and we only had one, the council didn't wanna do it, so we rebid it, and it went out, they came back with an extra hundred thousand. So...
I have nothing against either of these firms, and I have nothing, I just think that we've had the same set of eyes on our books for many, many, many years.
Nine years.
Huh?
Nine years.
Nine years, and I, I don't think it would be unreasonable to get another.
I don't, Mr. Lombardi?
Are we opening, are we opening up?
I'm, I'll open it, I'll recognize Mr. Lombardi as well, because he, his experience in the matter.
I'm only trying to be helpful here, and, and as I said, I, I just caution you as to going back out to bid, because I just mentioned a municipality right near here, went out to bid, no bidders. I can tell you that a non, a, a non-governmental agency, we, it took us, we're behind about a year on the audit, because it took us about a year to get an auditor. I, I, I'm telling you, it's crazy out there. And this is what I do, I mean, and, and the auditor general does not want you to go to the same auditor for more than six years. But, we're in such a... Right, requirement, that they're allowing it, and, and the auditor general's very strict on allowing things. And I think if you don't go to the lowest bidder, he, he's gonna want a good reason why you're not going to the lowest bidder, or why you're going back out.
And I've expressed...
And I'm just giving you that as, you can do whatever you wanna do, I'm just telling you, it's, it's weird out there.
And they, they know of the fact that we've been with Bacon for a while, this is, they know this, and they're still approving it.
You gotta give the history and everything.
Yeah, they have to go through, and they, I mean, I have, before I even start this process, I have to provide to them who we currently have and what we paid for them. So, they, they, and they have all the history of that, they know this, so...
Mr. President? You also run the risk that maybe Bacon, there was another application that they refused to take on and provide them services. You run the risk that they'll fill their time allotment with another community, so, um, I, I, I certainly, if you wish to hear my concerns, I think that Bacon should be hired for this position. For everything that everybody's explained, the reasons you're here from, people out there.
Eighty-five, it's up to the council, eighty-five thousand dollar difference.
I'll open it up to the council if they wanna recognize anybody in the audience.
Well, this comes, we have six more minutes.
Do we have to amend the agenda to accept public comment in this agenda?
Yeah, if there's rules of order, anybody can make a motion. Wanna make a motion to open it for public discussion, amend the agenda?
Right, because we just had someone speak, so, sure.
Okay, I'll second for discussion. I had Mr. Lombardi speak, because I know he, he works in this space, and so I do think it was prudent to, to get his, but, you know, we'll open it, as long as the comments, as long as the comments are short.
One person, as opposed to a large group.
Oh, yeah. Uh, we need a vote first. There's a motion and a second.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton? Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mike Clifford, two seconds. Yes, I think it's worth the extra money to go with a different auditor. We've had the same auditor for nine years, we should have done this six years ago. You, I think the recommendation of the auditor general was every three years, switch the auditor. So, this is way overdue, it's worth the money to have a different set of eyes on the books, thank you.
Can anyone, um, can I speak?
Yeah.
I, I don't know if anyone can express the money-saving tactic of spending an extra eighty-five grand for this.
Clarify that.
How, is, is, what is the difference of eighty-five grand gonna provide for the town?
It's gonna provide a different set of eyes, it's gonna provide a different perspective from different folks, looking at books that, you know, it, it doesn't mean the people aren't doing their job, it just means that, you know, you have someone else looking at it, and you're making sure that things don't fall between the cracks, and you make sure that everything is, we've had some issues, right? So, we wanna make sure that we don't...
The, we've had issues with the auditors?
No, no, well, with, with the findings.
I don't think we should... I don't think we should be, yeah, I don't think we should be talking about issues with firms, I think-
No, 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 no.
There's stuff that's come up in audits that, for the town, that needs to be looked at.
Right, and I think what we need to do is just have someone else look at it, I don't think that's a bad thing at all.
Well, we're gonna take that chance, and we may not have anyone, so get your pen and pencils out, guys.
No, 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 no.
They just approve it as is, they're not even, you're not even looking to go back out to bid, we're gonna approve it as, as presented.
One, one of the other as presented.
So, Tony, when you opened these bids, right, and I'm just asking, so it's, make sure my thought is correct, did you, you compared them both for the same services?
Yeah, we have to go through a whole grading ser, grading process that the OAG's office oversees.
Because-
I, I sit with, sorry, I sit with, me and the Assistant Finance Director, the Business Manager for the school, and her assistant as well. We, all four of us grade it, and then we combine our, combine our grade essentially and provide it. And we don't, kind of, yeah, we do our own sheet, in terms of grading, just to clarify, we don't-
We've got three minutes here.
That's fine, we can extend it if we have to. It just seems like the hours for the town on the Markham side are much higher, and do you know why, or was there any?
There's no explanation as to why.
So, they didn't put anything?
Mm-mm. I'm, I'm, I would assume, I, I don't really know why, it's higher for hours and higher for cost, I'm not really sure as to why.
Do we get a dedicated, do we have a dedicated contractor or something?
That I don't really think, I don't think so. And that, yeah, that's a-
Two options.
All right, I'll leave it up to the council.
What are we doing?
What does the council wish to do?
Well, I think we have to make a decision tonight, right? I don't think we can keep kicking-
For $85,000, it's, it's a lot of money to switch to, to go with the other company.
And if Mr. Lombardi is right, we may have no company.
They are, they are hard to find.
Okay, so make a motion, somebody.
Can I, can I ask us one last question before we make a motion? When did we bid this?
If my internet was working on my laptop, I'd be able to tell you the exact date, but I sent this to the, I sent this to the OAG's office like in January, and because we're on a queue, everybody's on a queue, it took them a long ti, that's when the bid opening was. But I wanna say like, late February, early March.
I think you said March previously, yeah.
Yeah, I can find you the, the exact date, my, my email's actually working right now, give me one second.
I see, looking that up, if anybody wants to make a motion.
To extend?
Yeah, just five, like five minutes.
Making a-
How about if I just make a motion to approve, and then we can end the meeting without extending?
Go ahead.
Is that a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to-
Which one?
I would, I would make a motion to approve the award of bid for audit for the town school financial statements to Bacon and Company for a grand total of $147,800.
Second.
If I may.
Discussion, what?
I, sorry, so I sent it to them January 25th.
That's fine, Tony.
Uh, March, March 15, uh, March 14, sorry.
The question I have is if we're not satisfied with the audit next year, for whatever reason, is there an ability to get out of the contract?
I don't know, I don't know if that's-
Isn't it determined like the certain 60, 90-day notice, isn't that the standard?
I was gonna say, they usually should be, right?
Yeah.
Does it say that?
I'd have to see that.
Oh, okay. I know in language there is usually.
Standard boilerplate language, 60, 90 days notice that, that, that either party.
I can provide the solicitor-
I don't, I'm not saying it's in there, Congressman.
So, that, yeah, I'm just gonna say, you just gotta be careful there, because there's gonna have to be some cause as to why you did it.
Right, yeah.
I don't think there's an automatic.
Yeah, yeah, I was just asking.
They're clean, they're, you know, they're hiring people, they're doing it for the next three years, and then after the first year, you said, "No, thank you," you're gonna owe them something, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Unless it's in the contract.
And, I, I don't even, I don't even know if the Auditor General allowed that.
Yeah, I was just, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I can't say yes or no to that.
Okay.
That's a very good point about not, we don't even have the contracts, so we, we're just going, we're basing our decision on this information here for appendices that